Thank you for your patience. We are still expecting one more member, but he is on his way, so we will go ahead and start. Thank you for your patience again. Thanks all for being here tonight. I hope everybody has signed in. If you haven't, please take a moment to do that, particularly if you plan to speak tonight. And as this is such a large group, I would also remind everybody to please silence their cell phones. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight. As I'm sure you are no doubt aware, our intent here tonight is to finish discussing the proposed rezoning, well, that's not the right word, the proposed zoning ordinance replacement here in the borough of Gettysburg. I do have one announcement before we start. It has come to the attention of several members of council that over the course of the weekend, there was an email circulated that stated that council members had proposed lifting the cap on four unrelated members residing in the same household and was going to raise it to 10. You may have read a similar letter to the editor to that effect today. I don't think anybody who watched last week's meeting could have drawn that conclusion. To the best of my knowledge, no one on council has suggested that, and we will not be discussing such a change tonight. If that is the reason you are here to speak for public comment, thank you, but we are not talking about that. All right, we do have some important meetings coming up that we want everybody to be aware of. They're on the screen here in this blue box. Most of these have to do with the annual process to craft our budget. As you can see, it is a pretty full autumn and winter for us, and we do, for that reason, we intend to put this zoning issue to bed tonight, although there will be still, even still, multiple opportunities for people to speak before any vote is taken on the final ordinance revisions. Before we get to public comment tonight, we do have two or three special presentations on the subject of development and the efforts to balance planning for the future against preserving the past, the issues of balancing commercial interests against residential. So I'm going to hand this over now to Manager Gabel.
Thank you, President Moon. Good evening, everyone in the gallery. As staff was preparing for this meeting tonight, it occurred to us that in all of the discussions recently between the Planning Commission and the council, what was missing in those discussions were essentially two things. One, pivotal to your rezoning effort, is what you ultimately are going to approve consistent with the joint economic, the Central Adams Joint Economic, the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan. That's point one. Point two, zoning is, can be used as a tool for economic development, and that's kind of been missing in the conversations between the Planning Commission and the council as well. So tonight, we would like to take a few moments to recap both of those topics as it relates to your charge in front of you tonight about drafting a new zoning ordinance for Gettysburg Borough. There are going to be four presenters, myself, the Borough Manager, followed by John Whitmore, our Planning Director, Casey Kemper, who is with the Adams Economic Alliance, and then followed up by Main Street President Jill Sellers. I am tasked with introducing the topic overall, so this presentation by staff outlines how strategic zoning reform aligned with the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan can help close the borough's growing annual budget gap by fostering targeted redevelopment and increasing property tax revenue. Zoning, when used strategically, can support increased property tax revenue in a way that's entirely consistent with the goals outlined in the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan, a plan that, as you know, emphasizes sustainable development, economic resilience, and the preservation of Gettysburg's historic character. Let's start with a simple but powerful idea. Zoning shapes not just the character of a community, but its financial future. As a borough with nearly 45% of property exempt from taxation, our ability to fund essential services from public safety to street repairs to sidewalk repairs to replacement of failing subterranean infrastructure to historic preservation largely depends on property tax revenue. Zoning is the framework that sets the conditions for how much value can be created on each parcel of land located inside Gettysburg Borough. The Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan outlines a vision for growth within designated areas with a focus on smart, compact, and context-sensitive development. Gettysburg already benefits from a compact and walkable urban fabric, a tax-efficient form of development, but the borough has an opportunity to do much more. For example, targeted upzoning or rezoning in certain parts of the borough, such as underutilized commercial corridors or transition zones between residential and commercial areas, will allow for mixed-use or higher-density development that still fits within the borough's historic and architectural context. These developments result in a higher assessed value per acre, which in turn produces more property tax revenue without requiring additional land consumption. To be clear, this isn't about overdevelopment or compromising what makes Gettysburg unique. It's about being intentional, encouraging the kind of growth the Comprehensive Plan already calls for, like infill development, reuse of vacant or underutilized properties, and smart integration of housing, commerce, and public services. Let me give a quick example. Imagine a single-story building on a half-acre lot currently assessed at, we'll call, $200,000. If that site is rezoned to allow for a six- or seven-story mixed-use building with ground floor retail and apartments above, the new development could easily be assessed at $2.4 million or more, a 12-fold increase in taxable value on the same land footprint. And all of that value helps fund borough operations year after year. This example is not simply academic. It is real for everyone in Gettysburg. Here's a specific example as to why. It was really recently learned by staff that Gettysburg Borough will enter the 2026 budget year with a $188,000 budget shortfall before anything else is even considered. Why is that? The borough just received word that the health insurance premiums for all full-time borough staff will increase by 24.9% in 2026. 14 of those employees are police officers. What happens if the borough strategically rezones and incentivizes redevelopment on four underutilized half-acre parcels in the proposed revitalization district? Assume again, each parcel is currently assessed at $200,000. Now suppose these parcels are redeveloped into small-scale mixed-use or multifamily buildings with ground floor retail or office and 10 to 12 residential units above, similar to development patterns already present in other historic boroughs across the Commonwealth. Each of those completed projects might be assessed at $2 million to $2.5 million based on construction value, market demand, and income potential. So here's the math. The original assessed value for parcels is $800,000. The new total assessed value on those same four redeveloped parcels is now $8 to $10 million, a net increase in assessment of $8 to $9.2 million. Now let's apply Gettysburg's property tax millage, which currently sits at $4.5566. The new annual tax revenue from redevelopment of those parcels comes to the 8 million times .0044566 is $36,400 or the upper end of $9.2 million, which realizes the borough $41,900. So just for well, for four well-placed redevelopment projects made possible through smart zoning would generate $36,000 to $42,000 in annual property tax revenue. Scale that up to 15 or 20 similar projects over five to 10 years, and Gettysburg would fully close the $188,000 budget gap without raising taxes. This is a sustainable, repeatable strategy. Align zoning with desired development, guide it to the right locations, and let private investment fund the public good. Moreover, this type of strategic zoning change supports other priorities in the Joint Comprehensive Plan: increasing housing options, attracting younger residents and families, supporting walkability, and encouraging local entrepreneurship. It's also worth noting that dense mixed-use developments are more fiscally efficient for municipalities. They often rely less on car infrastructure, use existing utility networks, and generate more revenue per linear foot of street. That's important for a borough like Gettysburg, which must balance a limited tax base with high visitation, aging infrastructure, and a strong desire to preserve its unique identity. Now, none of this means the borough will achieve these outcomes overnight, but by identifying specific areas like the proposed revitalization district for increases in density and flexibility, the borough will increase its tax base without expanding its footprint. And importantly, this approach aligns with a shared vision adopted by Gettysburg and its neighboring municipalities in the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan. It emphasizes coordination across jurisdictions, investment in the borough center, and the preservation of rural lands outside the growth areas, all while keeping growth where it can be supported efficiently. To conclude, zoning is not just a technical planning tool. It's a strategic policy choice that will help Gettysburg become more financially resilient, more livable, and more aligned with the long-term vision of the region. By thoughtful updating Gettysburg Borough's zoning code to encourage smart, high-value development in appropriate areas, Gettysburg is not just planning for land, but are planning for a stronger tax base and ultimately for the continued health and vitality of the borough. With that, I will turn it over to Planning Director Whitmore.
Good evening. So this copy of this presentation, it's been amended a little bit since last week, but it was provided with a copy of the agenda. I'm going to go through some of these slides pretty quick. I imagine we will get back to a few of them when we actually get to the nuts and bolts discussion for the new business. Overall, though, I'm going to hit on four points: the Comprehensive Plan, Revitalization District, the definition of family, land use table, and zoning map. So the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan, the borough adopted this as the planning document to guide your future land use, to guide your future infrastructure decisions, on March 11, 2019. The plan was developed in consultation with jurisdictions of Cumberland and Strabane.
Can you pause for one moment? So folks who are sitting over there, I cannot see the screen. If you wanted to, there are some empty seats. If you want to see the presentation that's being given right now. No pressure, just saying you could.
The plan itself identifies the need for zoning. Specifically, there's a quote, "All zoning amendments should be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan." That's provided on page four of that document. The plan identifies the growth areas for this region. As you can see, the entirety of the borough of Gettysburg is identified as a primary designated growth area. The plan, the comp plan, seeks to build upon the notion that Gettysburg Borough and the built areas within Cumberland and Strabane Townships, long roadways leading out of the borough, are the core of the Central Adams community and should remain so into the future. That's providing a statement with the plan that Gettysburg is the urban area for the entire county jurisdiction. As such, it creates an impetus for how we should be developing our downtown. Currently, the current land use provisions in the comp plan and in the, with the downtown core and, sorry, with Revitalization District, that area would be identified as the downtown core, this brown area right here. And then there's also downtown neighborhood. Now, I printed this off as a bunch of small text. Basically, though, with the downtown core, it's concentrated around the center of Gettysburg and Lincoln Square. It's within the historic district. It's densely developed mixture of uses. I'm going to emphasize, most of the buildings are two to four stories tall. Attractive facades and signage maintain the historic character. Many buildings house commercial uses on the first floor and apartments on the upper floor, vibrant core of the community where residents, employees, and tourists come together. The future land use for this area shows, once again, this downtown core. Further, this show has been underlined. In looking at the future land use, this provision is provided for the downtown core, and it's once again saying it's the historic heart of Gettysburg Borough, densely developed mixture of urban uses. This part down here, though, additional efforts to increase the density of the borough core, such as adaptive reuse, creative infill, or redevelopment projects are recommended. Provide that such efforts are consistent with the existing cultural and historic integrity of the downtown core. Your comp plan is telling you that these are the areas that we should be looking at, not just for the borough, but the region and wider county to be putting our growth. An alternative can be seen in the surrounding communities where we see single-family housing development, excessive amounts of pavement, and low connectivity, encouraging people to take automobiles. The result, you can imagine, is going to be increased congestion as a result of what's going on outside of the borough. When looking at the land use recommendations as it relates to the downtown core, there are three key points that staff has identified. Borough should explore various ordinance options which are designed to promote new and redevelopment in the downtown core. Such options could include an increase in density and innovative strategies for parking. A careful architectural review of new and redevelopment should continue to occur through the HARB, and the existing ordinance standards should be retained or enhanced to ensure continuation of the urban form and fabric of the downtown core. Building placement and orientation, parking, landscaping, and urban infrastructure, includes stuff on the sidewalks, our furniture, standards should all be evaluated and improved as necessary. So this was developed and approved in 2019. This is some imaging of your current, what I would say is the west side of Carlisle Street Revitalization District as proposed by the Planning Commission. These are not unique properties. Single-story, a lot of gravel, a lot of asphalt, not exactly historic-looking structures where we do have housing, not exactly welcoming environment for pedestrians. This is not an urban form that's beneficial. When we're looking at this area, right down here is the square. This is your core area. This is where your highest-value land is supposed to be. For the entire county, this is supposed to be the prime location, and this is what we have going on now with Old Town zoning occurring in this area. Planning Commission has provided option, this option one, for a revitalization district that includes portions of the Gettysburg Station project site, this, I'd say, east side of Carlisle, and then the west side. Their option did not include increased building height opportunity, so instead, building heights would remain at 48 feet, as is currently permitted in the Old Town District. The current ROR district does allow for increased building heights. That is what's basically the equivalent of our revitalization zone that's currently in existence. The mixed-use building height, extended height permitting 72-foot-tall inhabitable structure, you're allowed to actually go up to a total of 84 feet, additional 12 for mechanicals. The Gettysburg Station project went through this process. They received zoning hearing board approval for the development of these four parcels. That's a project that's currently in review. Some options have been established that we can go over with council. We have, let's go back real quick, utilizing the existing ROR districts, so it'd be the Gettysburg Station site, Transit Center relocation site, and this is SCAP properties. We have one where it's just the Gettysburg Station project as revitalization, which would be a decrease from the current areas. It doesn't include the, yeah, it doesn't include SCAP property and would not include the western side area. Option four, where we just do the western side area, if that's something that the council would like to examine. And finally, an option five, where we would go even further and evaluate different criteria for the east side and the west side. We're really, from a staff perspective, trying to get you to option one. That should be the entire entirety of that area as initially provided. When looking at the western side properties, out of a total property area of about 5.8, 5.7 and a half acres, you have roughly 3.8 acres that's suboptimal. That means we're talking about warehouse uses, surface parking lots, personal storage facilities with gravel parking lots, just nothing. It's, there is a lot of just nothing in that vicinity. The revitalization two property area, this would be the east side as it is, the Gettysburg Station site, as it currently is, that site, 2.79 acres, does not include Foth Alley or these other public right-of-ways. 2.41 acres is currently vacant. If you go there now, there's large pipes. That's all it's doing. It's just a storage place for outdoor vacant storage, and we run into issues with property maintenance to make sure they're keeping their weeds down to a non-noxious level, which is a problem that we have as it is not being used. The extended-height building, this was something that the Planning Commission removed from the initial working document. It's that mixed-use extended building height. Instead of going to 84 feet, though, we just have a max of 72 feet. In the current ordinance, there are some incentives. You have to do a few of them if you want to get the maximum height, but you still can't go above 72 feet. We've incorporated quite a few of those incentives. So we have integrated parking, transit center relocation, green area development, that's like green space, Gettysburg air loop development. Those are currently what developers are allowed to pursue to have increased building height in the ROR zone. And when we're talking about increased building height, something that's come up through the planning process that's extremely frustrating, at least to me, has been a discussion that some of these projects are going to be towers, are going to be extremely large skyscrapers. So from my experience in working for the borough, the biggest tragedy was the Gettysburg National Tower. It looked very good if, I guess, you were in Vegas at the time, but it did not have a good seat in Gettysburg. That thing was 306, 307 feet in height. The Culp's Hill Observation Tower is 60 feet in height, and the rear portion of the Gettysburg Hotel is 72 feet in height. We're not talking about high-rises or skyscrapers. IBC codes, you have to be 75 feet to be able to be what they consider a high-rise. NFPA, they're the ones that make our fire code, 79 feet. There's something that's kind of lost when we use language that's not in fitting with what's occurring. What this would allow is for a 72-foot-tall building, assuming that these, some of these incentives are also sought. To, I guess, provide even more incentive for community development, staff has looked at quite a number of other opportunities, including transfer of development-like right impact fee programs, and then additional exactions that can be sought upon the individual developers. So like low to no parking onsite, if you build something with no parking, that's an exaction on the individual developer's site. Channel wall restoration. There's a few of the properties that abut our channel wall that, from a flood maintenance perspective, the channel wall is in dire shape. If development were to occur, it would be well within not only the interest of the community, but it would be in the interest of our flood insurance rate payers to be able to have that infrastructure upgraded. And as the developer is the one that's causing the increased nuisance, this is the opportunity then to have that occur. Additional things, we looked at potential specific uses allowing for increased building height and then opportunities within business improvement district or if there's specific building design or site design criteria. So we'll go over transfer development rights and impact fees really quick. This is something that we're not recommending at this exact time, but we would like to explore further, possibly next year, to be able to strengthen the ordinance. A transfer development right program is where you have, let's say you want to develop something, but we, so give an example, in the revitalization district, if someone wanted to have an increased building height, they would find a historic property that's been in an area that's predetermined and planned, preserve it in a manner that's sufficient to the zoning hearing board ordinance standards, in which case then you have, that transfer of development right has occurred, they then have the ability to have an increased building height, they being the developer. There's impact fees that are allowed by Commonwealth Pennsylvania related transportation capital improvements and open space. The Transportation Capital Improvement Fund is pretty much like the equivalent of a standard impact fee. It's the developer, you set up a fund, a developer will pay an amount based on, we have to have a plan establishing the correct fee. The fee is then applied, they pay the fee either based on a number of units, based on the development criteria, however, it wants, we, the borough, want to have it set up. But overall, the funds could then be used to pay for infrastructure improvements throughout the borough. And that becomes huge when we're thinking about improvements or potential capital stack for the Baltimore Street project. And, I mean, there's plenty of sidewalks and transportation opportunities throughout the borough. The park and open space fee and loop program's a little bit different. It's more like an APFO or Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. This one, a developer is allowed to pay a fee, the fee goes into a special fund, and then GARA or if we're, whoever we would have taking on the recreational responsibilities for the plan, would then have access to the funds as they see fit and as planned. You can get very creative with how to create the funding mechanism, but that's something that we're going to be just bringing to your attention tonight. For the revitalization district, the majority of the land is underutilized. We have 4.2 acres total that are in the western section that could have extended building height infill development potential based on the lots and configurations. There's 6.21 acres located in the district that is currently underutilized, the surface parking, vacant asphalt, warehouse, or personal storage uses. All of these uses are incompatible land uses that conflict with the Old Town District and with the downtown core future land use vision of the comprehensive plan. So while you're going through this, you're going to have to make a determination as to the area, where is the revitalization district going to be? How is it going to be actually defined? Is it going to be one district or multiple districts? Is extended building height going to be a thing? Are the incentives sufficient? Are we going to have additional incentives? And are there any land use changes associated with revitalization that seem pertinent? Planning Commission has recommended that option one map without extended-height building provisions. Staff recommends option one with those provisions and a number of incentives. We're providing 10 total that we could do immediately, would not require substantial ordinance change, and then having a provision where at least five of those incentives have to be occurring to allow for the increased building height. We can work then with Planning Commission for the additional study of impact via transfer development right ordinances. With the definition of family, the Planning Commission has provided a definition that utilizes the HUD equal access rule. And basically, that's provisions that already exist within the Fair Housing Act that apply to basically every type of family that could exist legally, at least as it relates to housing law. The idea is the borough would not be in the business of determining who or what exactly constitutes a family. We would be looking at situations where if there's overcrowding or if there are uses that are more in line with a boarding house or duplex, but by default, we're not going to be necessarily looking for incompatibility with this definition. The issue we ran into with the planning process was that there was concern from, especially property owners in the R1 district, about the faux fraternities, the college students that amass and create nuisance on their neighbors. We utilized language from other ordinances, made it very restrictive, so that no more than, you can't basically have more than one full-time college student at a property in the single-family dwelling in the R1 single-family district. We do provide a provision where that would be established with, that the individual must have established his household separate from their parents or legal guardians for at least one year prior. This is similar to these other definitions. The current definition is we're allowed to have, it's no more than four unrelated persons. It gets, it has similar language, similar to the HUD rule, but it's not quite the same. Other jurisdictions limit, based on, say, Philadelphia, no more than three persons. State College, they have a situation where it's an unlimited number of persons. Morgantown, West Virginia, where I previously practiced and had to do enforcement on this, we had a whole gamut of how you establish a family, and it was messy. But basically, the result was no more than three individuals that were, no more than two college students living in certain residential districts. Westchester has a very long definition where they allow for multiple scenarios, but generally it's no more than four unrelated individuals living together as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit. With this, you're going to need to determine, does the change of definition of family need to occur? Which one would you like to go with? If you do want to change it, as it will reduce occupancy. And then there is the question of limiting college student occupancy, which you do have the ability to do. With this, the Planning Commission has recommended the HUD equal access rule-based family definition, which includes a provision to limit college student occupancy. Staff recommends that Borough Council adopt the Planning Commission definition. Finally, we'll get into the zoning map and land use table discussion. Zoning map, the only change we've heard discussed from council is 100 Beaufort Avenue. This property is special to a certain extent. We recently had a zoning hearing board meeting regarding a proposed convenience store right here. That was not approved. There was overwhelming negative comment from the community and surrounding property owners. In particular, the concern wasn't so much for these other uses. So like as it is now, there's, the Republican Party has an office here, there's a martial arts studio. I think this was, at one point, it was a hair place, but then there was a dog salon. But those types of uses did not necessarily elicit the negative reaction. They're still commercial. One of the things that the comp plan is suggesting is that we allow for these commercial opportunities along the corridors. However, one of the problems we have with the properties in the NC3 corridor are those, the gas stations and these higher-intensity commercial uses, which, so for like properties, this property is going to become historic shortly. It was developed less than 50 years ago, but it's close. At some point, I mean, there's no availability for parking now. It's, there's problems with this property, there's problems with multiple properties along these corridors with parking. The ability to give or provide customer service to high-frequency land uses presents a challenge. So one of the things that, especially when you're thinking about those gasoline stations with NC3, those are going to be non-conforming. So for all this, staff is recommending removing convenience store as a permitted or special exception use in the NC3. That would seem to at least alleviate the concern related to, a very legitimate concern related to the frequency of having customers going into a convenience store as opposed to these other professional services and office uses, which are not going to have the same traffic load. So at this point, I'm wrapping up my conversation. I guarantee we'll go back to a lot of this, but if there's any comments or questions you have for me right this second, I can answer them, but we're, like I said, we've got to get back to it. So, thank you.
Could you briefly illustrate the difference between...
So this is not a time for public comment. Thank you. I think we're going to move on to Casey Kemper with the Adams Economic Alliance, please.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Casey Kemper. I am the Vice President of the Adams Economic Alliance. We all know Gettysburg is more than a place on the map. It's our home. It's a town surrounded by nearly 6,000 acres of Gettysburg National Military Park, preserved for the world to remember and for us to enjoy. It's our farms, our neighbors, our Main Street, and our history, all packed into just a few square miles. But here's the challenge, our tax base is shrinking. The borough has a lot of land that doesn't generate property taxes between the battlefield government buildings and nonprofits. It leaves fewer properties carrying the financial burden for things like road repairs, infrastructure improvements, and emergency services. Spreading out development stretches out our infrastructure, water, sewer, emergency responses even thinner, while adding more miles to maintain and fewer dollars to support them. The best practice, and really the most cost-effective approach, is to grow smart, to build up and not just out. Higher density in the borough with mixed-use development, apartments over retail shops and small businesses, means more people living, working, and shopping, spending their money right here. That strengthens our tax base without encroaching into the surrounding farmland or national park that defines Gettysburg in Adams County. And think about our visitors. Over a million people come here because of what makes Gettysburg unique, a vibrant historic downtown set against open, protected land. They come for a walkable, authentic experience. The planning process and HARB ensure and protect Gettysburg's authenticity that is important to both locals and visitors. This isn't about growing for the sake of growth. It's about balance, preserving the character of our town while maintaining for the next generation. Our comprehensive plan can do that, protect what must be protected, and allow thoughtful infill that keeps Gettysburg thriving for the people who call it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemper. And then Jill Sellers, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what you've already heard, but I do want to go over a couple of things. So zoning is a really technical thing. That's why you're here, because it's hard to talk about. Casey said it beautifully, that zoning is going to be one of the things that's going to shape the future of Gettysburg. We talked about the number of tax-exempt properties and the number of properties that are being taken off of the tax rolls. So the borough is basically shrinking as far as the tax base goes. That's why this zoning process is so difficult to do. So it's all about maximizing the land that you do have. So the intentional growth that was spoken of, let me tell you other towns that this has worked in. So Lancaster, I realize there's a size difference clearly, but they revived their downtown with some mixed-use buildings. Westchester, they built an evening economy with apartments above their shops, changed Westchester tremendously. Lidditz, which is a little bit closer to the size of Gettysburg, added density without losing its charm. It's a beautiful historic city. It's now one of the most vibrant towns in the Commonwealth, if not in the nation. So Gettysburg is obviously a national, international destination. People live, work, and play here. So reinvestment is vital. Last week, Main Street Gettysburg introduced our next five-year strategy, and it's based on three transformative strategies. One is the walkable, accessible historic district. This is good for our businesses, it's good for tourism, and it's certainly good for just that vibrancy that we keep hearing about here. Second is a revitalized Steinware Avenue. That is about putting new attractions there, new businesses there, and fill the vacant commercial properties. We're seeing more and more vacancies, not only in the historic district on Steinware Avenue, but on Baltimore Street and other places, and that is a huge concern, places that are for sale, places that are for rent. We need to work on getting, making sure that we have those spaces filled and that they're thriving. And finally, getting into our neighborhoods, number three is reviving Old Getty Place, which is the third ward. So this is an attempt, a major plan that we have for an Elm Street plan. It's going to revitalize that historic neighborhood through reinvestments, through grants, and through community involvement. This is put pride back in that neighborhood, which is very walkable to our historic district. Walkability matters. This is a huge thing. This is what downtowns are about. People want to live downtown so they can walk to where they go. This was one of the reasons that, many years ago, that Kenny's Market was established downtown because we needed a market locally where people could go because they weren't going to walk all the way out to Straband to go to the New Giant. So that's why you have Kenny's. People want ADA sidewalks. We want safe crosswalks. We want streetscapes that invite you to go strolling and shopping and dining and eating. We know that parking matters. Hate to say it because I know it's a hard one, but the plan that Main Street has put together is look for smarter parking options. We've talked about this revitalization district and how we have so much surface parking space. That is valuable, valuable land. Think of that as beachfront property, and we have it in gravel. It's not a good use of land. So we're talking about looking at garages, shuttles, better signs for visitors so they can park one time and then walk our beautiful downtown and explore all of Gettysburg and stay. We are already investing in these things. The facade program invested over $600,000 over the last couple of years, and we have another round of $50,000 going out there. That is available to business owners. If you know anybody that needs signs, new paint, new windows, please send them to me. I have grant money. Zero-interest loan program. This covers a few other things, roofs, accessibility, safety upgrades, investments. If you lose a refrigerator in your business, we have zero-interest loans. I don't know if you've checked the rate on loans right now. It's not zero anywhere but probably right here. So send a business owner to me. So here's the key. We need to be able to develop, or excuse me, to attract developers that are willing to invest. And if you can't get to the point, if they can't look at our ordinances here and see that it's, there's a point that they can have a return on their investment, they're not even going to make the initial inquiry. So we need shops and restaurants at the street level, and we need housing, much-needed housing. Anyone that does not think that there is a housing problem in Adams County is not really looking at the facts and the numbers of people that are looking for housing, not just affordable housing. Housing is a crisis at every level. Whether you're a doctor coming to the hospital to work, housing is limited for you to find. Whether you're a service worker that's here looking for an apartment, housing is hard to find. So we need housing here. How do we add value on the same land? We grow our tax base by building up in designated areas, going back to the fact that this is strategic in nature. We're not talking about, you know, building apartment buildings in all of our neighborhoods. That's not what the Elm Street program is about. That's not what this discussion is about. We're going to bring more life to downtown. So the zoning is going to guide intentional development, creating that framework that developers will be willing to submit a proposal, and then the borough can evaluate their potential at that point. So without the proper zoning, no investment is possible. And from Main Street Gettysburg's 40 years of experience in serving... And from Main Street Gettysburg's 40 years of experience in serving this district, we need to take advantage of, you know, this as the vibrant place that it needs to continue to be, so we can pass this on to the next generations of stewards that are going to take care of it. Because unlike Colonial Williamsburg, this is a living, breathing economy, and we have to remember that, that this is not something that this board makes isolated decisions like the board in Colonial Williamsburg does. They have a board of probably 12 to 20 people that make the decisions for that location as a closed park. This is an economy full of schools, full of students, businesses, and families, and so all of that comes together, and all of it touches on why this plan was launched in 2019, and you're here tonight to figure out the way ahead so that we can leave it better than we found it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. All right. Thanks to everybody who spoke tonight. Compelling stuff. This is going to take us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda, so that means comprehensive rezoning. If you'd like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda, you can wait for the second public comment section of the evening. So, I'm going to take a loose poll here. Can I see a show of hands, everybody who intends to speak tonight? Okay. That's not crazy, so we'll keep it at five minutes, please. If we were going to go past half an hour, we might have restricted that a little bit, but that seems like a very manageable use of time, so we'll go through. And I just want to remind everybody again, the announcement I made at the beginning: There is no proposal to lift cap on unrelated people living in a house to 10. That is not been proposed by anybody here, so if that is what you would like to speak about, you're welcome to do so, but we're not discussing it. Public comment, please. Use the podium. Please use the microphone. State your name and address of residence. Please limit yourself to five minutes.
Sharon Monahan. So many things, oh, West Broadway. So many things worth commenting on this evening from the presentations, but I just want to focus on one related to your comments, Matt. The Planning Commission submitted a proposal to the council on August 28th, which was the first workshop last week, which had a definition that did not, that did not limit the number of unrelated people that may live in residential housing in Gettysburg. So, which is different than what we have now, which is a limit to four related people, excuse me, four unrelated people. So, it would be very helpful to know how the decision is going to be made, how long the Borough Council is going to take to consider planning's proposal and how the public can provide input to that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
You have to tell them your name and then your address, please. Do you want me to go first? Okay. Here, stand up.
Hi, I'm Lauren Jean Griffin of 126 East Middle Street, and I'm just here to, like, really advocate for, when you do the rezoning of the, those special areas where you're looking at items for possible height changes and things, to really consider making it mandatory to at least have some more affordable housing in there, but also in the infrastructure, like, as you're looking at everything, to please consider the infrastructure that supports the density, which includes the hospital, allowing them to expand if that's necessary, or do things so that we have all the items we need. Also, I'm here because my child brought up chickens before, and they really want to see chickens allowed in the zoning as well as in the ordinance. And I know some people think it belongs here or there, but my children both feel strongly, so I will let my child speak now.
My name is Bolt.
Tell them where you live.
I live on 126 East Middle Street.
What do I say now? You say, tell them why you want chickens.
I want chickens because I got Lyme disease, because there is, because I kept getting ticks, and I couldn't move at all. And so, I want chickens because they eat ticks, and they would start to, and if we had chickens legalized, the population of lanternflies would go down a lot. And also, if you wouldn't want chickens, and some people say that chickens are noisy, and if you think chickens are noisy, I mean, if you think chickens are noisy, then you definitely see motorcycles, fire trucks, and church bells are all really, really noisy. And chickens are fluffy and really cute.
Thank you. Good.
Public comment, please.
I'm Michael Gelner. I lived at 50 East Broadway, been a resident of the borough for over 12 years now.
Can you raise the microphone, please?
Microphone. Thank you. I'm not high-tech. There are three points I wanted to make. First of all, I was interested to see that the borough is working together with Straben and Cumberland Townships. I think that's laudable, and it opens the way to many forms of cooperation. I don't know what the payoff for the borough is, but I think that there are many possibilities. And I'd like to suggest one area that the three could work together on, and that's something I raised shortly after I moved here, which is treasuring our water resources. Somebody mentioned beachfront property. Creekfront property should really be considered beachfront property too, especially if there were water in the creeks. If you looked at the creeks today, they're dry. You looked at them a couple of weeks ago, they had flowing water in them, and I much prefer creeks with flowing water in them. And one way to ensure that that lasts, if not year-round, at least through most of even the dry season, is to have temporary water retention areas. One area for the Tiber, of course, would be behind the sunset, I think it is, and into the parkland area, where you could very easily set up a temporary water retention area, probably with the help of beavers, who will now reside in the park. And I know there's been a lot of controversy over that, but between that, maybe a little bit of engineering with a couple-foot levees, we could have enough water stored there for, to keep the Tiber flowing year-round or near-year-round. And if you want to see what a flowing creek looks like and can do for a town, I heard mention of several other towns here, but nobody mentioned Frederick, Maryland. And many of you have been there and seen the creek and see what can be done along the creek. The storage area that has been mentioned and shown in the slides, I think would look much nicer as a restaurant area with tables and a way to get down to the creek for the kids and splash around in the water. This is something I've mentioned before to the Stormwater Authority, and I'd really rather spend money on beautification of our watercourses instead of building walls to get it out of here. I mean, I'm not advocating for stormwater in the streets. I understand. That's a no-no. But I think we can have some ways. I don't know about the lake on the college, what happens to the water there, but I really would like some creative thinking on all of that. And the third point I have is, we have a lot of asphalt-covered areas here, and some of that could use some coverage, some shade, and maybe some solar panels on top of that shade, and maybe there'd be a place to put some storage batteries, and we could have much better use of our solar resources, too. Anyway, thank you very much for your attention, and if anybody wants to toss ideas around, I'd be happy to join in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment.
I'm John Taber at 129 West Lincoln Avenue. Wanted briefly to ask if you could illustrate the differences in the two incentives, parking onsite and then low or limited parking. Are those both incentives to developers? They seem to be conflicting to me.
So, this is an opportunity for us to receive public comment. We don't engage in a back-and-forth question-and-answer. If you wanted to submit those questions in writing to Mr. Whitmore, I'm sure he would respond.
Certainly. Okay. So, in that case, my public comment is mostly about home stays. So, I know we're all familiar with the phenomenon of, you know, private equity or individuals buying up historic buildings and then converting them into sort of slummy Airbnb pseudo-hotels. And I would like to propose that most of Gettysburg, if it's a primary residence, should have home stays as an option, and that meaning short-term rental, Airbnb or similar-style situation. This has myriad benefits. One of them, obviously, is, you know, increased income for some residents that may have a spare room and extra off-street parking. One of them is, of course, increased tax revenue for the borough, because those can have tax collected and remitted as sort of a pillow tax. One of them is increased competition and decreased incentive for these sort of slummy pseudo-hotels. Part of the zoning regulation, I think, also should be more stringent requirements for these situations where people buy up properties and then turn them into exclusive short-term rentals. A lot of them are not set up properly to be commercial spaces, you know, they don't have the fire code infrastructure. They're sort of skating by without the things that you would normally have to do as a hotel. And in my opinion, you know, we have housing shortage. We have lots of things that those properties could much better be used for. So, the two things that I think would be most helpful in this situation would be allowing home stays across the board. Of course, if it's a primary residence, that's pretty easy to prove, you know, you can certainly tell if somebody's only there briefly, or if it's, you know, it's their primary residence. That, in my opinion, has zero downsides, you know, given all of the above things, and more stringently, regulating properties where they are exclusively short-term rentals with no other community benefit. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Public comment.
I'm Mike Malawicki. My wife, Mary, and I live at 2 West Broadway. I sent a memo the other day to a few folks, and I had a conversation with Chris, and I'm going to make it fast. I think the definition of unrelated folks in R1 and R2 needs a number. I'm proposing four for that number. John gave some examples of other municipalities that had numbers. It's simple. It's straightforward. You can debate what that number would be. Matt, I've never heard the number 10, but it, you know, fine, but really not fine. But I would suggest four, based on the fact that four has been used in the past by the borough. So, that's my spiel, okay? And that's the bottom line. And I also suggested some, I'm not going to go through all this, but I also suggested some wording about family to clarify, and as you consider everything over the next month, I would ask you to just take a look at that, and John has that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Monica Gra, Springs Avenue, Ward Two. I have a prepared comment. It will be under five minutes, I promise. To the members of Borough Council, thank you for making extra time in your busy schedules to hold this special meeting. While it was my understanding that you plan to take up continued discussion about the proposed rezoning map and related public and council member concerns, I did not realize until I arrived that the goal was to put it all to bed tonight, so please take my hastily-revised prepared comments with that in mind. In this context, I'm here to offer public comment regarding the proposed rezoning of 100 Buford Avenue, out of its current R1 designation and into the proposed NC three. You're probably getting very tired of me talking about this. As I have already communicated through my public comment at the July 28th meeting, I hold serious concerns about the negative implications of this proposed change for the surrounding neighborhood on grounds of safety, code enforcement, parking, and uses that are simply inappropriate to the location. Mr. Whitmore showed you the site just now, but did not show you the view from the residence's view and from the actual access roads. I have some on my phone, but I don't have a way to show them to you. It is not accessible from the view that you saw, really. It's actually sitting on the corner of Reynolds and Seminary. You have to cross two crosswalks in order to enter the building, and it sits along a bike path and a residential sidewalk. So, technically, the street address is Buford, which is technically Route 30, but if you're standing there, as I did yesterday, watching traffic go by, I can show you the different pictures. It is not the same as standing at the post office on the other side of the street. After finding MLS listings for the property online today that include text describing this property as already rezoned into NC three and anticipating an even larger number of commercial uses for the space to the prospective buyer, I am very disheartened to see that, given that it has been explicitly stated during, that during Phase Three, our public comment and additional input would not only be welcome, but would seriously be taken, be seriously taken, it makes me wonder if that's actually the case. However, as Mr. Whitmore reminded us just now, and I really appreciate your presentation, summarizing what happened in that three-hour hearing about the Ash and Dash, which was a vape store, even if they were calling it a convenience store. As Mr. Whitmore reminded us just now, Mr. Berger suggested to this body last time that the rezoning process should just leave this R1-districted site unchanged, pointing out that the, well, Mr. Berger pointed out, not Mr. Whitmore. Mr. Berger had pointed out that the protective oversight of the special exception mechanism would be lost with this change. This strikes me as a decent compromise for residents, which I've been thinking about after hearing Mr. Gable's presentation about taxes and the need for the borough. I understand that. I'm not anti-business. So, this strikes me as a decent compromise for residents, which addresses most but not all of the borough-level issues I have flagged already to some of you with the new uses in the draft code, as well in Chapter 27, Table 3, which has about 98, if I remember offhand, I counted them, listed uses. So, on that note, there are close to 100 uses listed for NC three, and I didn't go through and check all the other NCs, but I think some of them would probably apply. Most of them are by right, but some are by special exception. I can suggest that several warrant reconsideration if they are to be allowed for all parcels in the NC, whichever one you're talking about, but NC three in particular is what I was looking at. But limiting the special exception review process was also something that I've heard the Planning Commission talk about wanting to have fewer of. As far as increased revenue, 100 Buford is already a property that is valued at over $100 million. I'm not sure how much more that's going to go, since you can't raise the height of it. It's in the Harb district, and it's already got apartments in it. I did note that the new height is three feet higher, but I don't think that's going to add much taxable value. We would be glad to see, or speaking for myself, I would be glad to see tenants to join our families and medical offices, personal service providers that are already there, as Mr. Whitmore pointed out, as opposed to rights by use in the NC three draft plan or other by special exception, like small bedding, firearm sales, or other uses that simply don't have the parking for potential customers for uses that we would probably all welcome, like maybe a bakery or a brew pub. I don't know how you're going to have that working on the site. Also, there's a text, there's text in the code that I've alerted some of you to that mandates gambling, large gambling, to be located within 400 feet of playgrounds, sorry, 500 feet of playgrounds and K-12 schools. I assume that is a typo, but I just want to bring that to your attention. And back to 100 Buford, I agree with Mr. Berger that special exception oversight is critically important to retain here, and I support the suggestion to leave it, leave it alone, just leave it as it is. The rezoning of this parcel does not maintain the status quo, and those of us who live nearby understand well why this is the case, so please consider what we have to say. Clearly, all of this needs more time. Clearly, all of this needs more time and attention, and I just implore you to please don't rush this really, really important document by trying to put it to bed today if you're not ready to. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of your comments and your patience with all of my emails and texts and bothering everyone, and for your continued service to the borough. Thank you.
Public comment.
My apologies, just had a brief follow-up. So, as my nearly next-door neighbor, Mike, just was speaking about the family provisions and the proposed changes. If I'm correct, I think our shared frustration with the pseudo-fraternities that are in my backyard and your backyard, putting a specific number in the policy would, in essence, contrary to the HUD definition, sort of throw the baby out with the bathwater. The benefit of that HUD text is that it's inclusive, right? So, talking about lack of affordable housing, we have lots of families that are living intergenerationally now. Some of them might not be blood-related, you know, we have same-sex couples, different family units that, I think we would all agree, counts as a real family, but might not meet that exact minimum, or, sorry, maximum four-person blood-related count. So, that HUD definition is excellent because it's extremely inclusive for all different types of families, but we also have that language at the bottom that explicitly prohibits pseudo-fraternities because I think that's what we're all frustrated about, is, you know, lots of college kids partying in a house that their parents bought them, and it's very annoying and loud, and that provision at the bottom would effectively prevent that, but without limiting other types of family units that might, in the future, be, you know, discriminated against based on that HUD definition. That's what I had to say about that. The other thing that I forgot to mention about homestays, the, another benefit of that would be requiring, requiring the sort of pseudo-hotels to be up-to-code commercially would decrease pressure on our wonderful local bed and breakfasts, which, you know, we have a lot of, not a lot, but, you know, a few really neat family businesses around here, which I'm sure are experiencing some economic pressure from the short-term rentals, you know, and it's not the kind of, same experience that you really want to have as a tourist coming in here, you know, staying in sort of like a slummy place like this. You could have, in my opinion, a better experience having a homestay at like an actual primary residence where, something that people would actually care about, or going to a traditional bed and breakfast to really get that actual B&amp;B experience. That's what I have to say about those things.
Anyone who has not spoken this evening who'd like to speak?
My name is Wes Seer. I live at 1138 Long Lane in the 3rd Ward in Gettysburg, the southernmost residence in the borough. And just to be brief, I urge the Borough Council to not increase the number of individuals considered as family to a number greater than four. Thank you.
Last call? Okay.
I live at 314 North Stratton Street in Gettysburg. You've heard about the redevelopment zone that was established in 2018 with allowable extra height to 72 feet. Some speakers at meetings mentioned that the original recommendation for the ROR height was 110 feet, and say we should be thankful that it became 72 feet plus mechanicals. It seems the extended height idea came from State College along with Mr. Gable, who arrived as borough manager in 2014. He had advised folks in Center County, "Don't be afraid of a taller building." And on the printed one, there's an article from Center County. A March 2025 article from State College describes the extended height situation in downtown State College. It has had an impact on the character of the downtown, and much of the retail office space remains vacant. Mr. Gable and others seem to want to transform Gettysburg into a taller, more modern downtown, which conflicts with the statement that maintaining existing cultural and historic integrity of downtown core, which was on Slide 10 in the staff presentation. Slide 11 mentions the need for careful review by Harb of any new or rehabilitation projects. This is important to the local tourism economy. The task force recommended expanding that REV zone to Railroad Street between Carlisle and North Washington, including the height incentives, plus one property on Carlisle. The Railroad Street area definitely has potential for redevelopment, but it also has significant limitations. There's no place for on-street parking, the railroad tracks block access to the south side, the lots are smaller, and there's multiple owners. The existing businesses, services, and residential uses have and need onsite parking. The proposed building configurations do not seem to consider the existing lack of off-site parking on Railroad Street and limited availability on North Washington. The idea might be nice, but may not be feasible. The Old Town height is 48 feet. If the Railroad Street vicinity developed even to that height, it would be doubling the height compared to the existing situation. That would be beneficial and in keeping with both Old Town and the neighboring moderate-density R2. To make it REV and incentivize up to 72 feet in height would be visually jarring and would potentially add too many people and cars to a small area. I suggested leaving it Old Town during the Planning Commission process, and I still support that. Some of the new incentives proposed for additional height do not make sense. Moving the transit center to Stratton Street has never made sense. The incentive should be to incorporate it into a project so it benefits the downtown, not be moved 600 feet away. Other incentives on that list need a second look. Comments I made during the 2018 ordinance process for the ROR show that I was comfortable with a maximum of 60 feet height incentive with a stepped building form, which was recommended by the Adams County Planning Office, to help minimize the shading effect on neighboring properties and to transition from the shorter neighboring structures, and have wider setback from the neighboring properties. In general, there's a need to consider whether, in a rush to increase the tax base, the borough could be stuffing too much in a too-small sack. I would be in favor of leaving the Railroad Street Old Town and making the REV zone height 48 feet with a 60-foot max with incentives, but do a better job of buffering the neighbor properties and a better job of considering the economically important architectural character of downtown Gettysburg and North Stratton Street. Any descriptions such as contemporary, modern, et cetera, should be left out of the REV descriptions, since they are not used in any other zone and could be limiting to Harb deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. I mean, you've had your five minutes.
I have something else.
Okay.
I'll be quick.
I mean, we only have one topic, it's the zoning, so...
It's about family.
Okay.
Unless you all got my email at 4 o'clock, and then I'll sit down.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. Since the members of the public are here, I'm going to make a public comment. A lot of you have spoken to this, and I just want to chime in. I sent these comments to you earlier today, but maybe not in time for the meeting. I would like to fully support Mr. Carr's concern that the final text be ensured to not inadvertently exclude anyone. I personally feel very strongly that our community should be one that's open to families of all stripes and sizes, biologically related or not. I've heard some numbers going around today that I don't know where they're coming from, and so that's why I'm standing here. If they consider themselves to be a family, and there are three foster kids and two unrelated guardians, that seems like that should be allowed. Love and kindness should be enough to constitute a family regardless of what officials du jour at HUD may choose to declare at some future point, so I think it's wise for local governance to offer a clear articulation and support for definitions that are intended, explicitly intended to be nondiscriminatory and expansive rather than reflective or restrictive, sorry, restrictive and/or reflective of particular personal convictions about who or what is a family that others would have inserted for that reason down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm still Lauren Jean of 126 East Middle Street. My, the father of my children is a combat veteran, and I, as a result, am aware of many families who have one parent, the other parent did not come home, and I think that Gettysburg, which is a battlefield, that helped veterans and helped people after the war, should absolutely welcome families that are diverse, that might include two widows and each of them with their castle of children, whatever number it is. But right now, it's like they could each only have one child and live together in the same house if it was the number four. So, I just really wanted to think about all those people that were brought into homes during the battle or after the battle while they were healing. Gettysburg was filled with homes with more than four people. That's in our history, and I would like to see that continue. Thank you.
Is there any further, okay.
My name is John Spangler. I live at 123 Springs Avenue, and I want to also underscore what I think is a better idea that Mr. Berger has suggested for the 100 Buford Avenue. The loss of control, the possible loopholes of developments, commercial developments that could end up at 100 Buford would be less than desirable and not in keeping with the overall energy and look and fabric of the streetscape in that area. So, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that Monica wasn't the only one in that neighborhood who felt that way. Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment?
I would brief think about the student rentals, whether at a now or at the end of the year.
Everyone is limited to five minutes of public comment. Some of you have taken the opportunity to speak more than once. There are many people here who would wish to speak, and we also have several hours of deliberation to get to tonight, which is why we started early. So, I'm more interested in hearing from somebody who has not spoken tonight, who has something they would like to discuss about the zoning hearing, right? I'm sorry, the zoning rewrite. No one else wishes to speak? Sue, would you please?
Thank you, Matt. I don't think you'd really like comments at the end of the year. The rezoning process proposes to limit off-campus student living to those who have lived independently from their parents for at least one year. The thinking was that maybe a more responsible type of student would be a better fit for a neighborhood. I thought that might be a good solution. However, I was told by Planning Commission and staff that the years spent on campus would count as a household separate from their parents. Better wording might be financially independent, otherwise it's meaningless. But one aspect of student rentals that doesn't, you know, the noise and all that stuff, but student rentals impact availability and affordability of housing for non-students. Owners charge students relative to college cost for a room on campus. Across the street from me was, each student, each four, each of the four was paying $900 a month, which is $3,600. The lease for 10 months means $36,000. 12 months would be $43,200. They even had a GoFundMe page so that they could do the required payment on campus and also have their off-site faux fraternity. Two local real estate professionals confirmed to me that that's how student rentals are charged. This outcompetes local individuals and families seeking housing that is 28% to 30% of their gross income. In the example above, that would require a gross income of around $120,000 to $129,000. The median, that's midpoint, household income in Gettysburg is $52,656, and the mean, that's the average, household income is $81,905. Young professionals, whose income may be around $50,000, cannot afford to live in town. Student rentals impact quality of life in residential neighborhoods. A major reason for moving off-campus is the lack of supervision and rules. Some students are respectful of their surroundings, others are party houses. One solution, other than the zoning, is the rental unit occupancy section of the Borough Code, which addresses expected behavior within the neighborhood or community, and it actually has some steps that are to be taken. It says, "The policy of the borough is to protect the quality of life of those borough residents who live within traditionally residential neighborhoods in which existing housing has been converted into non-owner occupied rental properties." And also, the next section says, "Peaceful enjoyment. The occupants shall conduct themselves and require other persons on the premises to conduct themselves in a manner that will not disturb the peaceful enjoyment of adjacent or nearby dwellings by the persons occupying the same. In addition to zoning, enforcement of existing tools could help improve the situation." Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Is there any further public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you for listening to me. My name's Jennifer Limone, and I just recently purchased the house at 12 Seminary Avenue, which is directly next to 100 Buford Avenue. I don't care if anybody cares to see the lack of parking on my side. I have taken three pictures, mostly for me. I think it's a safety issue. There is a bus that stops right in front of my house now, and also, the closest parking to the space is handicap parking, so I'm not really sure where people are going to park. But mostly for me, I just, I bought into this neighborhood because I love it, and I think it's a very charming neighborhood, and I'd like to see it remain that way. And I also want to note that Monica and John are not the only ones who care about the neighborhood. I do. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? We do need to start our business for the evening here. All right. Thank you, everybody. As we get into this here, I do want to respond to just a couple of comments because I think there's some context that needs to be established here. Specifically, I want to speak to Monica, the concern that we are rushing this process. We are in the fourth year of this. This was supposed to be done December of last year. The Planning Commission was supposed to take three months to review a document that we paid a consultant $40,000 to write for us. They decided to go a different route, and I'm actually really glad they did. They had at least 14, if not more, public meetings, some of which where I think there was more public comment than there was meeting. The Planning Commission has done a heavy lift for the Borough Council here in fielding a lot of concerns about some of the minutia that the working group that worked a year on this draft did not get into. And that working group was made up of mostly volunteers. We had a couple paid professionals. We had our consultant from Michael Baker International, whom we paid $40,000 to write a professional contemporary zoning ordinance for us. We did have our planning director, both Mr. Whitmore and his predecessor, he took over about 2/3 of the way through that process. At different points in the year, multiple staff members in the room, the manager, the engineer, Ms. Sellers, Mr. Griffey for code enforcement, many people were involved in input into this document. Also at the table with us was a member, two members of Harb, one of whom also has been on council and currently sits on the signware bid and is an entrepreneur deeply invested in this community. currently sits on the signware bid and is an entrepreneur deeply invested in this community. We had a representative from the Adams Economic Alliance there. We had people representing local nonprofits. And we had, if I didn't say this, we had members of the County Planning Office working with us as well. Everything we do for zoning and planning goes through county review. John and this council are not the end of the road. Everything we do must be consistent with county policy as well as state and federal law. This process was started in 2022 when we allocated budget funds to secure the services of a professional firm to do this for us. We then spent a year writing the draft. We gave it to the Planning Commission and tasked them with reviewing it for three months. And what they did was turn it into a much longer process that really got into some of the nuts and bolts and the deep concerns of people in the community. So here we are now. And I'm just letting you know that we have set an aggressive timeline to finish this. In April, we asked the Planning Commission to finish their review and return the draft to council for us to start reviewing it. Over the last three months, council members have had to review both, oh, not both, but all three of the existing zoning ordinance, which is about 120 pages. The working group's draft is just about 190 pages and the Planning Commission's draft, which is about 190 pages. It's hard to put these three documents side by side, review them all, and analyze where the changes have been made. We have relied heavily on the staff to help us as these are the career professionals with certifications in this field who make sure that the decisions we are making are consistent with local, state, and federal law. We, in January of this year, set as a legislative priority the completion of this process, which has been going on for now almost four years. A considerable amount of time of taxpayer resources, taxpayer dollars, has been committed to this. As stewards of our budgets, we have a responsibility to make sure that our legislative processes move forward in a responsible, thoughtful, timely manner. So that is why we have set an aggressive timetable. After last week's workshop, council members were given ample opportunity to discuss anything in the three versions that was a concern to them. Very little came out. And we were left with four and a half sort of points of contention as we got into the wee hours of the night. And that's why we decided to start earlier, having a special meeting specifically to get this done. The timetable we have in front of us moving forward is aggressive, but there are legal things that must happen. At our next business meeting, provided we get to a consensus tonight, our next business meeting this month, we would vote to advertise a public hearing on the draft ordinance. That has, I believe, a 45 day window we have to advertise it. That gets us well into October. After the public hearing, we then have to actually advertise that we had an intent to create a new ordinance or sign a new ordinance. And that has to be advertised with a certain number of days in advance. And then, if we time it all correctly, yes, by our December business meeting, we could be voting to enact this and finish the project that we started four years ago for the benefit of this borough and the taxpayers. So I will apologize if my tone was flip. But I will reiterate that we are staying here tonight until we close all open items. We will be finishing this business tonight. All right. So in order, the things we need to tackle are going to start with the definition of a family. We'll then move on to any exceptions that council members have in the use tables or the map itself. And then we will move on to the two open questions. Map and usage lead us naturally into a discussion of 100 Buford. And then we will close by determining what the future of the revitalization district is. So the first subject tonight is the definition of a family. Now, again, I think this is an area where the Planning Commission has done some pretty important work for us here. The reason this came about, and this is just me as an observer watching the planning meetings over the last 18 months, the reason this came about is because there is a desire to use the zoning document in order to influence the ordinance in such a way that it controls human behavior with respect to private property, specifically party houses. There has been, I believe, a robust dialogue about this. People came out who were insistent that setting any definition is discriminatory. There are people who came out that said that we must do everything we can through these definitions to limit all college cohabitation. I think there's a questionable legality and morality about using a document like this to target a specific population. Even still, I understand that this is a tool for how we determine land usage, and that is our primary job. We are a corporate incorporated entity that governs land usage. So we do have to define family. The term is used multiple times within the ordinance. And in order for us to have a legally defensible position, should we go to court over this issue, we have to have this document to back up our position. If we were to avow that some entity had abused their property rights based on a misunderstanding of the definition of what a family is, well, then we need to have defined it. If we don't define it, we don't have a leg to stand on. Would you say that that's correct, Mr. Whitmore?
Yes.
Thank you for your directness. So let's look at the definition. And we don't need to go through all the multiple different definitions here. I think we have a really pretty simple question here in front of us tonight. Do we accept the definition that the Planning Commission has come up with? I don't think at any point anybody on the Planning Commission expressed any sort of moral position that this definition should restrict families of choice. Indeed, this definition is intended to do something completely different. It is to curtail the proliferation of, you know, too many young people living consequence free in a shared habitation. So we really only have one question here. This definition as it stands, is there anybody here who opposes using this definition in the ordinance we would adopt moving forward?
No. I'll be just as direct as John.
As far as I understand it, this is the least restrictive of, as far as the first part of the definition goes. And as far as the second definition, this is bringing it down from four to two. So it is further restricting the problem areas that have been brought forward by the public.
Yeah, currently, you could have a situation where a single family dwelling could be a two bedroom dwelling. You could have four college students living in that dwelling, and they would meet the legal definition of family. This definition as proposed, if you have more than one college student, full time college student, then that is not a family.
Exclusively. So there's ways to get around it probably.
There are. It's not going to be a catchall.
Yeah.
There are going to be situations where there are adult college students who, they're going to be able to form a household, form a family. It's directly going towards undergraduates that, I use the term for economics. It could be a definition, it could be change of that. Economics is scarcity, the scarcity of being fun, having fun at the expense of your neighbors. That's what it really is. It's the ability to have low cost housing in group setting.
Sure. And so how is it enforceable? I know our OIC isn't here tonight, but as far as, you know, this is happening, we have complaints about it. It gets, I see it goes to the police department. And then is it actually enforceable at all to help out some of these situations and creates more?
We, we're confident that this would be enforceable, that we have the capacity to work with the police department, have code enforcement, as they do now, when it comes to the nuisance requests we get, especially as generally in these areas, it's going to be litter. We will receive noise complaints and other police activity will be notified of. Once that were to occur, if we were, if, I mean, we're going to be looking at the totality of evidence, but it's generally very easy when it comes to overcrowding of students, especially when it comes, if we have a provision that the individuals have to be living on their own. I mean, mostly, we're going to find that those that are under the age of 21 are still using their parents' address, in which case it's clearly that they're not in compliance.
Okay. So yeah, that's.
You're okay with it? Mr. Berger?
Yeah, I'm okay with the definitions, especially the second one with the college students. John, how would you address the concerns from Mr. Malawiki and Mrs. Monahan about not having a number of unrelated people while still having that definition there? There are concerns that there would be unrelated people that wouldn't fit that definition, that that wasn't the borough code before or is in other municipalities. So what's wrong with putting a number like four unrelated people with that?
The challenge, it was brought up, there's housing scenarios where you could have 10 different people, 10 different last names, but they still have a familial bond. And then we would be, the borough would be in a situation where we're trying to define a family, which that's something that is next to impossible. The situation where they're unrelated, I mean, they may be unrelated in a general sense, but they're conforming to one household unit. If you, if a situation were to present itself where there are multiple families residing in the structure, then it becomes either a multifamily or duplex. So there's a land use issue. If it's single individuals living in one structure, if there are multiples, it becomes a question of is this a boarding house? In which case, then we can go to UCC code to determine how that would function. And if it looks like there's a land use issue, then we would rely upon the additional code to say this is a boarding house, that we have a situation. Generally, these are going to be situations where we're not evicting people. We're going to be working with property owners if there is an overcrowding situation, especially when it comes to college students. There's clear move out dates that we can establish. It's the response that we've received, though, throughout the planning process was a very real concern with the borough becoming discriminatory. And the issue with having a number is that it allows for that discrimination to occur at a greater extent.
And the major community concern is the proliferation of fraternities in college. And that's definitely addressed with the second aspect of that.
Yes. So you're good? Mr. Carr?
As usual, I'm the lone voice of other options. I don't really understand, I hear what you're saying whenever you need a definition of family for legal reasons. But I really would rather you be using the term household rather than the word family whatsoever, because so many people define family differently. And in this, and this aspect of this, and let me just also add real quickly before I go into the family versus household, word choice. I don't like that HUD equal access rule is up there because it's not relevant right now. It was changed. The last time it was, it was created with inclusivity was 2016. And then February of 2025, the new HUD secretary did away with it, per direction of you know who. So I don't like that it says HUD equal access rule and that we're using the HUD, we're not using the HUD equal access rule because it's not relevant. It's on the HUD.gov.gov website right now. So at any rate, that's a whole nother ball of wax. I prefer the word household over the family. But I also understand, we have been going over this for four years, and I appreciate all of the work that the volunteers on the Planning Commission have done to create this said definition of family. But looking at the previous one, I really don't, you know, I kind of like the first sentence, a household consisting of one or more persons related by genetics, adoption, or marriage, or a group of four or fewer persons. There's a lot in that original one. I'm not really sure why we had to change it. But now here we are. And I'll be the lone voice, but there we are. Because if, I am all about inclusivity. If anyone knows me, you know that. But the word family and the definition of it is different for everybody. But the word household is a household. And who is living in said household, especially when you're talking about a dwelling of four unrelated persons in a dwelling, single family detached land use. I have no issue with that. I have no issue with that. But, so I'm not of it, but I'll be the lone voice. I don't like what it is up there right now.
Well, you haven't heard from me yet. You don't know who you're going.
Yeah.
Ms. Lawson couldn't join us this evening, but I did have a lengthy discussion with her today about where she lands on all of these issues. As we're not voting tonight, you know, I'm not, there's no function as a proxy, but I can relate to you the conversation we had. And you don't have to trust that I'm telling you the straight poop on what she believes. She will watch this later. And if I misstate it, she will beat me up. So I will do my best to communicate her position. She was comfortable with the Planning Commission's recommendation. And I think I probably am as well. So it seems like that we have a majority consensus that using the Planning Commission's definition would be advisable. All right.
I have one more comment.
Please.
If you don't mind, to Mrs. Ciprilli's point with respect to the individuals establishing a household and the Planning Commission suggesting that if they live on college campus, that that is in effect establishing households. Is that accurate?
That is inaccurate.
Okay.
If the individual is residing in college housing as their residence, that's one thing. By default, they're generally not doing that. You're going to be like out of, you're going to have a housing situation where you're still living with your parents to a certain extent. Like I said, there's going to be wishy washy. There's going to be scenarios where it's not going to affect every college student, but we're confident that it would capture the college students that are creating nuisances.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I have one more request.
Can I ask you a question first? Would it make it more comfortable for you if we refer, I'm sorry, remove references to the HUD equal access rule?
Absolutely.
And we're just, this is the definition we're setting. We're not basing it in perpetuity in an evolving status on whatever the HUD definition is today.
Well, that's not what the HUD definition is today.
Right.
Not according to HUD.gov.
So if we.
It was changed February.
Got it. Right. So if we take away references to the HUD definition, are you comfortable with the definition as it's written?
I'm still not comfortable with the definition of family. I'd rather use the household. But at any rate, but yeah, I don't think, once this is finally advertised, I don't think you should be referencing HUD equal access rule. It's unfortunately not inclusive now. So you're basing it on your, and by putting it in writing like that, you're saying that, well, we're using the HUD. No, you're not. You're not.
That's, that's accurate.
Please remove the HUD equal access rule. But I'm more in favor of it. But I'm still, I'm still, I don't like the definition of family, period. But I am okay with being the lone voice.
Could I just ask Carrie here, is there any, like legislative wise, if we get wrapped up into something, is there any, is it more optimal to use household than family in this?
Well, actually, the reality is, why we've defined family is because so many zoning classifications are like single family, multifamily. And because of that, we need to define family. But it's not, we're not trying to legislate what a family is. We're trying to define what a certain. a certain housing type would be. So I do think that it is much better legally for us to use the term family. And, and I understand what, what Mr. Carr is saying, and that it's within the context of zoning that we need to do that, because again, it deals with various uses, residential uses of property, so.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just, thank you, Mr. Eastman. I'll just follow up on that, that, again, the previous quote definition of family that was previously established, I guess, in our, or amended ordinance number 1481-21 from October 12, 2021, I have less issue with that one than I do with this, this one that's on the screen right now, even though I am extremely about exclusivity. But I just, I don't know.
All right, so let's, let's do this, let's read the two out loud. And highlight for me, please, what the sticking points are. So the existing definition of family is a household consisting of one or more persons related by genetics, adoption or marriage, or a group of four or fewer persons who are not related by genetics, adoption or marriage, and none of whom are wards at the court unless such wards are related by genetics, adoption or marriage to members of such group living in a dwelling unit. Family homes shall include state-licensed adult family homes, state-licensed foster family homes, group care facilities, group care homes for the disabled required to be accommodated as residential uses pursuant to the Fair Housing Act. The term family shall exclude individuals residing in halfway houses, group homes licensed for juvenile offenders or other facilities, whether or not licensed by the state, where individuals are incarcerated or otherwise required to reside pursuant to a court order under the supervision of paid staff or personnel. The proposed definition under, from the Planning Commission's draft is the term family includes but is not limited to the following, includes but is not limited to the following. So there is room for inclusion here, I just, that, without, that language is new. Regardless of actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, marital status, a single person who may be an elderly person, disabled person, nearly elderly person, or any other single person, or a group of persons residing together. Such groups include but are not limited to: a family with or without children, a child who is temporarily away from home because of placement in foster care is considered a member of the family, an elderly family, a near-elderly family, a disabled family, a displaced family, or the remaining member of a tenant family. A household consisting exclusively of two or more full-time college students does not qualify as a family unless each individual in the household satisfies the following conditions. The individual must have established a household separate from their parents or legal guardians for at least one year prior. So is there a specific sticking point there that, besides the, the distinction between the words family and household, is there, is there something that is missing from the new definition that you feel was beneficial in the older definition?
I don't think it was something that's necessarily missing, I just think that the old one was fine as it is. We do have a nondiscrimination ordinance in place here in the Borough of Gettysburg that is inclusive and has something to do with employment, housing and public accommodations. I think we're, we're reaching here on the inclusive, inclusivity language to really try to cover things that we might already have covered in another ordinance. Am I wrong?
Um, maybe.
I appreciate the work that everyone has put into that. It's just, it just seems excessive. And I feel like once you start listing one person or one group, you better make sure you're listing all of them.
Well, it says it's not limited to.
So the language.
Because the word military isn't in there at all.
Right, but it's not limited to this.
I just, I don't see the point of listing it all out, if you're not, if you're going to say but not limited to. But again, I'm okay with being the lone voice. We do not have to have a, a.
Unanimous.
A unanimous decision on this.
Okay.
I appreciate all the work that everybody has put into and the voices of the, of the public comment as well.
All right. I, I think we've reached a general consensus, if not unanimous, so I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, everybody. The next topic, the two things we're allowed to take together have to do with the use tables and the map. And I think, as I said earlier, both of these topics lead us to the discussion on 100 Beaufort, but I would like to talk about the use tables and the maps apart from 100 Beaufort first. So council has had several months to review the use table. A week ago, I asked Mr. Eastman, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitmore to break it down, and I think a bit more of a digestible format here in the spreadsheet so that you can actually kind of see it grouped a little bit more by classifications of uses, and it's easier to just kind of scroll through. Is there anything in any zone that is a use either by right or by special exception that somebody feels is, shouldn't be where it is, or that it should be added where it I, I will say that the working group and the Planning Commission both spent considerable time on these use tables. Michael Baker International, when they were beginning to look at this, the first thing they did was drive and walk the entire borough and look at every single building from the street. What they were attempting to create as they mapped these zones was to develop, to understand the character of a neighborhood and where the boundaries are between those characters, where building styles changed from one block to the next, where uses changed from one block to the next, or even in the middle of a block. By creating that character map, they then applied that as an overlay on top of our existing zoning map, and for the most part, they kind of matched up. What the working group then did for a period of several months, I think we went through eight different revisions of the map, and we were going through parcel by parcel by parcel. We, we were, we had giant blowups of the maps here on easels, and we were going through with Sharpies and redrawing these lines. A lot of attention was paid to how those maps were drawn. The express goal in rearranging the zones was to create zones that better represent the existing uses of a property without taking uses away from a current landowner. That's, that's pretty key here, right? Like, it actually isn't even legal for us to take uses away, but what we can take away is the resale value of a property. If we reduce uses, we change the value. If we add uses, we improve the value. So that was the primary impetus in how we drew the maps. In reviewing the maps, does anybody have any questions about any parcel other than 100 Beaufort and why it ended up where it did?
I have a general question.
Please.
About the general services, commercial service uses, which is by right in all of the, all of the, basically, the commercial zones. Would that sort of be providing a catch-all for something that we don't even know exists? Or what is the purpose of a general service, a commercial service use, i- if you know and can tell me the definition? I didn't go into the definition, I, because I've, I've been looking at this table for quite a long time. But if you could explain for my own sake, what is a general commercial service use? That seems very broad, considering we have very specific definitions throughout the document.
So we do provide quite a number of typical commercial service uses.
Thank you.
But it is the, it is, it's safe to say it is a catch-all to a certain extent. The idea is for low-intensity business, commercial, some kind of transaction occurring, so it's not necessarily like an office or professional use. But these are things that generally are, when we have, would call, be called a retail sales establishment, which, from a zoning perspective, that's one, one of the things we look at as planners, is how is the land being used? And there is, things start getting really wonky when you begin changing just minute details. So like when we brought up convenience stores, you have a higher frequency of shopper, they're usually, they're come, how are they getting there? If it's built for automobiles, they're got to be having, you got to be having cars coming in and out at a higher frequency than, say, looking down here at one, I'm just going to pick optical goods. Like, how many, you're not, you're not going to have so many people getting an eye exam. It's not, the frequency is going to be much lower on a per-square-foot basis.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions about the map?
Just to follow up on that same general ser, general commercial service, does it, will it include firearms, sales and service?
It does include firearm sales and service.
Are there any restrictions on that as far as location? Like, is it near a school, residential homes?
A- as it is now, it's my understanding in the Commonwealth, you're able to sell firearms at any distance unless there's other statutory leg, legislation at the state level.
So by making it general commercial service, we're opening it up to include that?
It, it was, so as a retail sales establishment, it was always permitted. And this was something, especially when we were looking at pawn shop uses, as it's, that's a separate classification, with the understanding, a pawn shop is pretty much nowadays a gun store.
Thank you. All right. Again, any questions on the map? Yes, ma'am?
This will also include vape stores?
Okay. I just want to talk about the map right now, not the uses.
I just talked in general use.
I just want.
I'm sorry.
I just want to talk about the map right now. Does anybody have any issues on the map? Okay, I don't believe we do. Uses, please, no.
Sorry, I thought we were doing uses.
The table.
Sorry, Ms.
We were talking about tables.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Moon, President Moon. Will this include more vape stores opening?
So currently on this table, vape stores would only be allowed in gen, general commercial and Old Town.
So that would be a decrease from what's currently permitted.
Thank you.
All right. Any, so I think we've moved on from the map. Any other issues with the use table? Okay. So that leads us, I think, quite naturally to a discussion about 100 Beaufort. Like Ms. Limon, who spoke earlier this evening, I also used to reside at 12 Seminary Avenue, and currently I live kitty-corner from Monica. I'm intimately aware of this parcel as anybody else. In the year and a half I lived there, it almost burned down twice. It is a remarkably incongruous parcel in the neighborhood. It is a little bit odd that it is zoned R1 currently, as it doesn't seem to meet any of the definitions of R1. Do we have a thought? And by, by the way, before it was a dog groomer and a salon, it was also a gun store too, right? So we've had that in the neighborhood, in that very building. Do we know, have any idea of the history of how this ended up in the R1?
I was unable to find any specific determination. At one point, though, when it was initially developed, the property was zoned general commercial. It did receive variance from the zoning ordinance to permit the development of the, I believe it's mul, I forget the exact language, but to allow for the development of this multi-tenant building without adequate parking.
All right. So just for the benefit of those in the room and those watching at home, I want to talk a little bit about spot zoning, and Mr. Whitmore, Mr. Eastman might fill in a little bit here. Looking at the little tiny map that we have here with the parcel isolated in a red dotted line, as you can see, under the proposed map, both the ones submitted by the working group as well as by the Planning Commission, that parcel was designated NC3, as is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which we talked about extensively at the beginning of this meeting. Beaufort Avenue has been determined to be a site for mixed-use commercial and residential development for some decades. In terms of the character, you know, how this building fits into the neighborhood, does it fit the character of the R1 residential neighborhood? Does it fit the character of an NC3 commercial neighborhood? We have to pick one or the other. What we can't do is assign it its own zone where it has its own special rules. This would be called spot zoning, and that is unconstitutional and illegal. So we have to pick one or the other. I would like to hear staff's arguments for or against retaining its R1 designation as it stands currently.
So as the, the structure is, I believe it's at the 40-year mark roughly, it's been non-conforming. As it is now, it's beginning to lose tenants. They will, depending on the length of the parcel being, those tenant spaces being abandoned, they may not be able to functionally fill them again, at least with profitable uses. There is clear building design that is not a single-family dwelling, that by zoning the property R1, what I can see happen would be no development occurring at site, continued degradation of the property until there's an event that would necessitate that the nonconformity be removed. So basically, the structure would burn down, or some kind of event will occur where it needs to be demolished. As an R1, I mean, feasibly, you could probably develop that into a, one or two housing sites, single-family dwelling detached, but it's, we get, come to this argument about best places for commercial activity. Is this the best place? Probably not. It has, it has a historic vibe, though, of being a commercial property. Further, making this a little bit more convoluted, if, once it hits 50 years, per the historic district ordinance, it becomes a sensitive building, and we're actively supposed to keep it around. So it's, it's not a great structure in that regard, but by keeping it R1, it, all we're doing is maintaining the way it looks now. With the R3, we ha, do have an opportunity to hopefully redevelop it. Is it going to be perfect? Probably not. Is it going to be better? That's something that we're hopeful for. The ability for this site to be active is going to be a challenge, and that's why with NC3 along the corridors, it makes sense from a zoning perspective. If we had the ability to make it maybe a R2 or one of the potentially NC1, that may make sense. Will it alleviate the concerns of the neighborhood? I don't think so. There's still no parking. Even if there's houses, there's going to be very limited parking on that site. It's, it, I mean, it's a challenging site. Highly recommend, though, continuing to utilize the NC3. If there's concern about high-frequency commercial uses, we can limit the NC3 as proposed to eliminate the convenience store use. That's something, I mean, if you even wanted to go as far as to look at the NC4 district to remove the convenience store use, that seems to be something that the, we can imagine the benefit, but then the reality of modern convenience stores, they do seem to be becoming more vape store than convenience store, where 7-Elevens of the day are kind of going away. It's, it's, would be a shame if the, if the structure were to remain in a state of degradation. So I think you do have imperative to think about how to best utilize this property, and NC3 is, given the options, the best.
So we have two options before us. We can leave it as R1, which limits the future usage of the property in significant ways, or we can go with the working group and Planning Commission's recommendations to make it NC3, but the proposal has been put out to remove the convenience store usage from the NC3. Opinions, please.
Can you, about that proposal of removing convenience store from NC3, where else does that? Can you, um, about that proposal of removing convenience store from NC3, where else does that, what other locations in the borough would that, and would that include for NC3?
It's only going to be Beaufort and York. It's only a portion of York. I'm just pulling up the map now. Apologize for this. There it is. So this section of 30 and then this section of 30. Those, we have a gas station here. I believe the Exxon is on this block. Those would not be, those would be, those would become legal pre-existing non-conforming uses as gas station is not permitted in NC3. Highly, definitely recommend not looking at that one because we are having problems with gas stations and what happens when those tanks reach certain ages. So we have a real concern, pl- planning does, with that high of an intensity of use along these corridors, especially since it is going to be encouraging more automotive trips on our already, those are congested roads. The, um, the other areas that we're allowed to do convenience store, I mean, you have the core, and then of course Steinware, where you have general commercial.
I have a question that's, that might be related. There was discussion with planning about West Middle Street being NC3. Yet with the feedback and, and the, the care of keeping that neighborhood residential, that remained R2, correct?
That, that is correct. So, um, these properties, especially along West Middle, um, let's see, uh, Realty Office, Padiatress Bank, uh, there's a Memorial Company, Four Square Church, and there's some other office uses every once in a while.
And there was, there was pushback from the business community, commercial properties on West Middle Street to change it. I just see a little bit of a similarity here with this kind of odd parcel where you want to change it to NC3, yet the vast majority of the neighborhood's against it. And we're worried about this sort of, not worried about commercial creep per se, but, um, I do see a, a kind of similarity between not doing NC3 with West Middle Street and allowing it for this parcel here. Another question, when you say degradation, uh, what evidence you, do you have for that the property is in bad shape?
Well, with, with the tenant space being open, the, the potential for it to remain vacant.
But that's a strong word saying degradation.
Well, when, when tenant spaces are not being occupied, the property is in a state where it's no longer optimal.
I just have to reiterate just the overwhelming, um, opposition of this parcel going to NC3 with countless neighbors. I mean, well over a dozen, we've had emails, but I've had, uh, people that haven't emailed or come to the meetings, uh, definitely that are against us, and, um, we want to keep the neighborhood as it is. And there, there's already commercial, uh, operations that seem to be pretty strong there. Some of those businesses have been there for a long time. They're thriving. And we, I do want to have an oversight of, with the zoning hearing board, anytime a, a new commercial comes in, that it isn't something like a vape store. Or even a, I'm glad you're looking at taking out a convenience store for NC3, but, um, I'm not okay with just that compromise. I, I think we should remain R1, and so does my neighbors.
Um, quick comment. Um, correct me if I'm wrong. What's happening with the parcel at 100 Beaufort Avenue is the application of a definition that is actually matching what's currently happening. So with the residents and the residences on that parcel, um, or yeah, the residential parts of that parcel, is that currently matching what is defined as R1?
So the current site does not meet the characteristics for built environment or for land use for R1 district.
Okay, so that was the impetus for changing it. Okay.
And with the comprehensive plan recommending these commercial activities along the, the routes.
Does the, so there, you know, so when Ash and Dash wanted to open, there was a zoning hearing to see if a special exception could be granted. But does any given commercial use of those commercial storefronts require a hearing?
So.
Or is it just that because it was a new use?
Well, it's, it's because it was a potentially more intensive use. It's, there's a provision in the current zoning ordinance that allows for non-conforming, so this is a legal pre-existing non-conforming use situation. You're allowed to, I don't know why the ordinance does this, you're allowed, you're allowed to swap out a non-conforming use for another equally bad non-conforming use. Can't be worse. And so the intensity of which, and the zoning hearing board found that the change going from the personal service use to a, a convenience store was not acceptable. There, we're gonna hit a situation though, I can imagine we'll hit a situation where if a tenant space becomes abandoned or vacant for over a year, it has to comply with the ordinance. At which point, we're gonna have to have a, a discussion with Mr. Eastman on how do we enforce this land use? Because now we're gonna have portions of a multi-tenant building which may have to remain vacant in perpetuity.
Which establishes significant damage to the owner.
Yeah.
But as you suggested, Mr. Whitmore, the, um, NC3 zone could be modified to an extent that would prevent or at least prohibit some of those other uses that the tenants or the residents have raised concerns about.
Well, in particular, that convenience store use. I mean, if there was a desire to remove firearm sales and pawn shops, that would be something else we can, can do as well. If it were, when we start getting though to like the generals, the root, those, uh, general services commercial or those personal services.
The list is long.
It starts, we, we start really destroying the integrity of the district. And it becomes more sensible just to have it as NC1.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, there was, um, public comment some time ago about this that said, you know, and I think I'm quoting you again, Monica. You know, if this was a grocery store that sold fresh produce, I'd be in support of that. And as a neighbor, I would too. But we can't pretend that that wouldn't have the same increased traffic presence that a convenience store would. You know, any ti- any type of more intensive commercial use of those little storefronts is going to do that. I, I, I can testify, um, that when I lived next door, there was like a little yoga studio on one of them. And if there was, you know, nine folks doing yoga, I didn't get to park within a block of my house that night. Like, that, there's very little parking in a residential neighborhood. Uh, it is a very narrow street, which for some reason we allow parking on both sides. So the travel lane, if there's a large truck there, is often not wide enough for a car. So it is true that adding any more intensive commercial uses to this property is, um, is difficult for the people who live adjacent to it. It just, it does not have the amenities that would support the commercial uses it, uh, enjoys now. But it certainly couldn't support anything more intensive, uh, that would involve people traveling to it. Okay, so, uh, we have two choices here. We can leave it R1, which has problems associated with it. We can make it NC3 and alter the NC3 to be more palatable, but still it has some problems associated with it. Neither is a perfect solution here. We just have to figure out which one people feel is the least, um, damaging to the character of the neighborhood. So I need to hear opinions, please.
I have a question about, thank you, President Moon. I have a question about the, what, um, the building, 100 Beaufort. Is it, if it is R1, if it remains R1, is it in, is it impossible for, um, is it against zoning for the first floor to become residential?
So the, the problem we're gonna run into is you, in the R1 district, the only uses you can do are residential.
Are, are residential. So right now, it's, it's clearly mixed use.
Right now, it's, it's non-conforming. It doesn't.
Non-conforming to R.
Yeah, it did, it does not meet the regulation.
But I'm at, so, okay, so I think you've answered my question. That technically it's in R1 and that first floor could, could and should be, become residential.
Uh, you'd have to look at the parcel, the building really closely. Uh, I don't, I don't know that all of those storefronts have secondary exits. It would take some really intentional engineering and, um, it could be a really interesting transmogrification, but it could also be near impossible.
Realistically, the way that this structure would conform with an R1 district is for the removal of all of the commercial uses and one single-family dwelling unit for the entire structure. Which, that would arguably be.
A party house.
Well, it's not, it's not architecturally designed as a house, so it, it's already odd. We run into problems from a judicial standpoint when we have structures that are clearly designed to be one thing and we're saying it's zoned, we want to avoid a situation where we have judicial zoning making this determination for the borough.
So it's currently non-conforming, but because it's been, because it's been there non-conforming for so long, it is still allowed to be mixed use. Is that correct?
Oh, not, not mixed use. It's allowed to have.
It's allowed to have.
Personal service, commercial uses.
On the first floor and residential above.
Uh, I believe there are units, housing units above.
There are, yes.
I'd have to just confirm.
There are.
Overall, the, yeah, very limited.
Limited.
Limited commercial.
Commercial, limited retail, but, you know, personal services, dog grooming.
And then once, once they're out for a year, they've abandoned it. So you, you're not allowed to come back in. You're not allowed to revert to a similarly, um, problematic non-conforming use. It has to be in compliance, which, like I said, that's gonna be, what do we do? When it, question I have with Mr. Um, Eastman, will we get to that point?
Do you, are, do you mean if one tenant, for example, where was a dog groomer there once? So now, since they've left and went to a different address, there can never be another tenant that's a dog groomer?
If it's been abandoned for a year, that, that's a question.
Even though it's personal services, it's, it still fits the definition?
But it wouldn't, because it, it, there would be no use occurring in that tenant space for over a year. So the use has, has been vacated, per the non-conforming provisions. The, the use is supposed to conform with the district, which, that's a mess for that structure.
All right, so maybe if, this will help, if we kind of discuss what commercial uses would be allowed in NC3. Assisted living facility by special exception, s- bedding use small by special exception, brew pub by right, childcare center by right, community service by right, convenience store by right, but we're talking about striking that. Drinking place through special exception, eating place without drive-through by special exception. And again, the, there's special exception process, you know, you have to be able to meet certain criteria. It's not just saying that you could do it if you really wanted to. Uh, event venue by right, child, uh, family childcare home by right, funeral home by right, general commercial services by right, which could be a record store, a gun store, a comic book shop, a grocery store by right, a massage establishment by right, a medical clinic by right, methadone, uh, suboxone treatment facility is a special exception, microbrewery by right, uh, microbrewery, distillery, winery by right, office uses by right, pawn shop check cashing by special exception, private club by right, tattoo piercing by right, or tour operator by special exception. So I don't see a lot of commercial uses there, with the exception of grocery store, that are wildly out of step with what already goes on in the building. Uh, the ones that are special exceptions, uh, assisted living, bedding, small use, I mean, we could strike that pretty easily if we wanted to. Drinking place is special exception, eating place without drive-through, uh, treatment facility, pawn shop, tour operator. Most, I mean, most of those are fairly low impact with the exception of a restaurant or a bar. But again, they would have to pass this, the special exception process. They'd go through a zoning hearing board and they'd have to meet certain criteria. It's not, um, it's not necessarily saying, yeah, you get to do all this stuff if you want.
Right.
Things they could do by right, brew pub, childcare center, community service, um, event venue, which sort of it's already being used as, because they have meetings at the Republican office. Family ca- childcare, funeral home, general commercial services, grocery store, which we could take out if we want. Massage, medical clinic, microbrewery, distillery, winery, office use, private club, tattoo are all relatively low use.
And I'd like to point out that while we're discussing the commercial uses for the spaces, we also see in the civic uses, maybe somebody will decide to come in and put in a library, a museum, that would be great. Places of worship by right, police, fire, EMS, I'm not sure what that entails. I think they would need a little bit more space in that use. But those are by right, um, as civic uses, so, um, I don't know. Just something I thought was interesting as we go across the, the bottom of our enormous chart. Thank you for the spreadsheet, by the way.
Yes, thank you. I'll make one more comment. I'm, I'm in fa- um, I'm in agreement with Mr. Berger, um, on keeping it as is. On specifically of, because of the number of people, uh, that have spoken about it. However, and, and so I, I'm in favor of, of Mr. Berger's idea of keeping it as it is. If we are going to go, if the majority does want to talk about and changing it into NC3, I do have a lot of concerns that have been voiced, uh, that would, I would want to remove, such as, um, the bedding, the, um, the, the smoking vape shops, the convenience store, things like that. But I think, and I hear what you're saying about, uh, m- m- uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Whitmore, I hear what you're saying about the empty space, the empty quote, "commercial space" and abandoned for a year, um, and how we have to deal with that. I would say, I would rather us deal with that um, on a case-by-case basis as that comes up, when, and we'll cross that bridge when it comes to it. I know that there are probably some empty places, empty windows in there right now. Times are hard. We are, we're only in the, you know, how many years after, after the pandemic? But I would, I would like to listen to, uh, I would like to, uh, go with what, um, many, many people have voiced via email and phone call and in person, and leave it, leave it as is.
Peter?
I'm in favor of leaving it zoned as is, uh, to, uh, reiterate what, um, Mr. Carr said, with, I've, I've heard a lot of opposition to it, and I want to make sure we are bringing that voice to our decisions as well. I know we can't always do that. It doesn't always make sense. Uh, so, because we have the legislative responsibility, um, with this rezoning. But for this parcel of land, I think that we can, um, also, uh, take what our residents are bringing to us into, uh, effect here.
Alicia?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm thinking about this a lot. I, I, I was born and raised here. I, you know, used to. pass through these spaces, you know, on my way to school, on Springs Avenue and so forth. And I'm torn because I, I'm thinking that, you know, well, I do understand, first of all, what the residents are expressing. But I also understand that what we're doing could legally set us up for some problems down the road, is what it's sounding like, and maybe I'm wrong. If we are taking what's already in place and applying a definition to the current zone, would we be in, would we face some sort of predicament down the road by not labeling it what it already is? And I know, Mr. Whitmore, you pointed out some concerns about it. At the same time, I, you know, hear what the residents are saying about keeping it residential. It's been that way for a very long time. And yes, it is becoming a historic building. I'm taking offense to being called historic at 50, but we'll run with that. That's okay. If it's historic and, you know, I would assume, once it turns 50 years old, then we would have some, it's, I know it's not in the Harb district, but we would also.
Oh, it is.
It is in the Harb district. Okay.
Historic district.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't realize the boundary extended that far. But then in the future, we would certainly have some concerns and we would have that protection, whether it be residential or neighborhood commercial three, we would have the protection of Harb as soon as it reaches its 50th birthday. I'm not opposed to keeping it residential. If the majority of the people in the neighborhood are saying yes, please do that.
So you'd say, keep it R1?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson did support the compromise position of NC3 removing specifically offensive uses. I think that's where I would probably land as well. I would go a little further than just convenience store. I'd remove bedding, small use and grocery. The remaining uses are consistent with what the building does and it gives us exactly the flexibility we need in the future, whereas keeping it R1 ties our hands, it ties the owner's hands, it ties a buyer's hands. It's, I think it is definitely setting us up for some legal problems. I, I mean, it's almost like you're watching a train coming down the tracks. So I think that leaves just Patty and I in the NC3 camp.
I have a question for Mr. Eastman. Could the, could the owner, if it remains in R1, could the owner request special exception for different tenants, commercial tenants on the first floor?
I don't think, I mean, R1's not going to allow that use as a special exception.
Right, because it's not, because currently it's nonconforming. But they've been that way for. So what my que, I'm trying to find that happy medium there, that we please the residents, but also the owner, so that they can develop as they have been. And I also, sidebar, I, I also find it interesting that it's in the historic district and considered a historic building, but.
Well, it will be. It's not 50.
It will be eventually, but I just, the further we get away from, you know, the 1860s, you know, I always, when people want to donate costumes to me at the theater, I say, is it really a costume? Does it, does it predate the Titanic? Which was 1912? That's historic. Before that. Before that.
As a person who used a dog groomer there and also went to Four Kings, and I don't know how you feel about this, in your neighborhood, there's no place to park. It's precarious to park there. And most people just like park in zones that aren't for parking. And as you said, with a truck there, it's horrible. So I think that needs to be taken, and I think you mentioned that, into consideration for what kind of use goes in there. Because parking is atrocious unless people go over the done, uh, what's it called now?
Keeping it R1 does not eliminate the existing uses that are being done today in a nonconforming manner. Right? We are not alleviating any problems and we are setting the borough and the owner and the next owner up for protracted legal battles. And we are being advised by our professional staff not to do that. I just really want to stress that.
And there is no other solution. R1 or NC3 are only two options. There's nothing else that.
Yeah, we could redesign the entire map and then send it back to the planning commission for the next year. That's what we can do.
I mean, I'm asking, is there, is there, you mentioned R1, well, not R1, you mentioned NC1 earlier.
So to avoid spot zoning, the parcel has to be in a contiguous zone. We have availability with the R1, the shade, and we have the NC3.
Right.
We would have to, the easiest way to get NC1 would be to rezone the post office, abutting property here, and then get this parcel. That creates an issue for these parcels. Spot zoning, it's kind of like obscenity. The judges, they have difficulty defining it. Because it doesn't necessarily just need to be one parcel. It, it's a spot, an area that the borough is intentionally picking uses. You get, you fall into contractual zoning allegations, that it just becomes very challenging. When you have clearly defined districts as we have now, we can clearly say, yeah, it's not spot zoning. So as it is now, yeah, you only have two options, or NC3, or R1.
Yep, the, the comprehensive plan says this is a commercial site. The working group said it was a commercial site. The planning commission said it's a commercial site, and our staff is advising us to zone it as a commercial site.
Should the solicitor, do you have any advice for us on this?
Again, I, I don't want to reach into the legislative process, because that's solely your. But, I mean, one of the rules of zoning, and you should look at, is what is a property should be, I mean, what is the most usable manner? I mean, property needs to be used. It should not, we should not be zoning to limit property usage and so forth. Again, zoning is to be, to consider what are, you know, what are the, as you project, what are the the uses that may be made of that property? Vacant property is not, is not favored. I mean, unusable property is not favored. The other thing that occurred to me all through this is, I think that if we're ever challenged on a spot zoning, they're going to, we're going to watch a video of this, of this meeting here this evening, as we absolutely focused on one parcel of property.
Right, right.
So, again, the, the basic legal concept is, because essentially, understanding how zoning came, zoning came, I mean, basically, you need to zone with the, kind of the freest use of property possible. Because essentially, when you've developed zoning, you're limiting property rights.
Right.
Use rights of, of the property owners. And so it's within that constraint that you need to be cautious, if you will, in terms of doing something that's constitutional versus something that's unconstitutional.
Right. I, I mean, I just, I would encourage members here to kind of close your eyes for a second and think about some of the homes that are in the R1. Monica's house is a beautiful 130-year-old Victorian. Across the street is an immense purple Victorian. Irene's house is a beautiful brick house. Your home on Broadway, I mean, is astounding. I mean, these are, these are the homes we think of when we think of R1. And this parcel doesn't belong in R1 for so many reasons. Most notably because every single use it currently employs from residence to commercial is nonconforming with the R1. It's just not an R1 parcel. Unless anybody's changing their position, it looks like we have four people in favor of leaving it R1 and Patty and myself in favor of moving it to NC3 with reduced uses. Is anybody changing their position?
I think I am. Only because I am concerned about the future councils and certainly the future planning directors when John decides to retire in 30 years. Or the planning commission who will be voted in, I'm just, I'm just joking. You know, the planning commission who will come and have to make a decision on this particular parcel. None of us may be here in Gettysburg by the time this parcel makes some changes, or it has its 60 or 75th birthday. And I think if we can move it to NC3 and really consider the quality of life for the residents as we, if we can pick and choose those things on the uses chart or the uses table, I think we would be better served by doing that for the future. Considering that someday, none of us will be here, and that should certainly be zoned today to consider the future uses and planning. That is also aligned with the comprehension, with the comprehensive planning and what people before us kind of decided should happen.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Matt, I'll, I'll change over to NC3 with those changes to it. I don't want to see us getting into something legal issue with the owner or them. You know, they could be shown up here next meeting, being like, what did you do to my property? And so I trust our staff and the solicitor and so, yeah.
So if that were the case, we could look at the NC3, we could remove uses from this chart that we think are inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. I would recommend removing bedding use, small, grocery store and convenience store.
And while I know it's not the time to parcel out the general services use, because that would certainly limit our future property owners and business owners and people who want to come to Gettysburg and really put a little business in there, I think it would be in our interest someday to really, you know, not have that entire laundry list of things that become the caveat and, you know, where we could be adding something to a district that would not be beneficial for the residents. I think that's something that we really should think about. I know that would take some time and it would certainly take some discussion, but I'm not comfortable with, like, the dozens and dozens of general commercial uses being sort of undefined and then setting up our zoning, our zoning board and our planning commission to decide then in the future, you know, what is beneficial or not beneficial for a neighborhood. I don't know. I don't know why that bothers me, but it, it just does. Where we have everything else listed specifically, so much as we have like methadone treatment facility, and that's very, very specific. And then we have this catch-all category that I think will bring residents forward, because they'll say, well, we didn't realize that was in the catch-all category and.
So this might be an interesting, an interesting place to have John kind of talk a little bit about how this list of uses is derived, not just at the local level, but.
Right. At the state.
Levels superseding us.
Yes, okay.
And further, there's an interesting thing here, that under the law, if a use exists, we are required to permit it somewhere in the borough.
Gotcha.
Not necessarily everywhere, but if a use exists under these definitions and tables, we have to provide for it.
I see.
So for example, methadone, suboxone treatment facility could be a state-designated use, so we are required to provide for it somewhere. Not in every single zone, but in at least one.
Okay.
There is one use that we are required to offer in every single zone imaginable, and that is forestry. And that's, that's the law. So John, could you talk a little bit about how these use tables are compiled, where all of these distinctions come from? Just so people understand that this is not an arbitrary list that we kind of cobbled together.
So, yeah, we have our existing ordinance, and I mentioned the retail sales establishment. It doesn't even say that, just says retail business use. And that really captures a lot of the nuisance uses that are more modern. So the vape store, that's a big one. As it exists now in our ordinance, that, that's a retail business and it's, it's allowed in a number of uses as a result. What we went through with the typical commercial service uses, utilizing, the American Planning Association provides the Planner's Dictionary, a number of definitions, other jurisdictions within the Commonwealth and within the nation. These are uses that we were able to establish that fit into that general retail, but have not typically been defined on their own. And if they have been, may not, it may not make sense to have a separate category if it's so much similar to another use. And when, like a lot of these uses, they also fit into other categories as well. They may fit into a broader recreation use. They may fit into a component of another permitted use. This, that's why we, we, it's, it's broad, yes, but at the same time, we're trying to provide guidance to a developer so that we run, we have situations where, yeah, they're not relying on me to provide an ad hoc determination or trying to, the other way, trying to sneak in, say, a vape store as a convenience store. Having clearly defined definitions, or at least as many as we can, provides that guidance to the property owners, to developers and to the community. Are there things we're missing? Of course. We, I mean, there are new use categories that are thought up all the time. I think, when we were drafting this, I, I proposed the vertiport. Because now we have to have a special airport designation for drones. It's just, there's always going to be new uses occurring, and that's why we have a process to amend this ordinance. And I think one of the, so like, one of the things, I think it's kind of, this discussion was firearm sales. That's one that gets really tricky, because I've been in situations professionally where, when we removed that one, the state came in and preempted the, all municipalities' ability to preempt, or to limit or locate firearm sales. When it comes to some of these more politically charged activities and uses, it can become a very big problem for more than just municipality. Overall, with those, they are generally, they'd be components of a larger use to almost all extents, but it, overall, we were, we were trying to really get out those, you're going to have a lot of customers coming in and paying for things. And if we were able to tease those out, if we were able to tease out other known uses that are challenging, we did so. Yeah, it's not, there's never going to be a perfect scenario, and especially some of these things, they're, they're already going out of date. Like having a photocopying printing place, Kinko's has been around for like 20 years. So it, some of, these are going to age out themselves. Having that update process and having a planning commission that's engaged with the ordinance will be the borough's check to ensure that we don't have situations where property owners or residents are extremely concerned about incompatible land uses.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Moon, for helping to clarify that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I understand why this particular one is, is is thorny. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to walk into, we have a, we have a tobacco smoke shop, vape store in our neighborhood now in the West Side Plaza, and I got to visit for the first time, just because I wanted to kind of scope it out, and it is a strange feeling to have that within spitting distance of my house. I'm a recovering tobacco addict myself, so it's been long enough that, like, I found the sort of proliferation of, of these, you know, vice-oriented sales to be sort of alarming. I couldn't believe how large it was, how well-stocked it was, the variety of products. I couldn't believe how large it was, how well-stocked it was, the variety of products. The availability of things that I haven't thought about in 16 years, four months and three, three weeks, is, it's, it's pretty crazy. And then also as a parent, I will tell you, I have gone to pick up my kids at Lincoln in the middle school and I've seen those batteries and those cartridges laying around the parking lot, like the, the availability of this stuff is detrimental to our community. So I understand the concern here that rose about when the Ashen Dash was proposed. And, you know, I don't reject the notion of keeping it R1 out of some sort of stubbornness. Like I don't need Chris and Monica and Irene throwing rocks through my window. My concern here is that we have to zone these properties, we do have to do our best to create these maps and use tables in ways that are consistent with existing uses as well as the intended uses and while maintaining the, the characters of the neighborhoods that we all hold dear. This particular parcel is, is problematic because it's, as it's currently zoned, nothing about it is a conforming use. And if we leave it that way, I think we would be setting ourselves up for some sort of difficulty down the road. So I have a vote tally here, I'll ignore that and I'll ask everybody again.
I have more questions, I'm sorry.
Please.
So one more time, if, again, I'm still in favor of leaving it R1, but I'm open to the conversation that we're having right now. If it were to change to NC3, does that change, again, the question I'm having is, does that change every other NC3 or are we just talking this parcel?
This would affect the entirety of the district.
Which is including, which is already including some convenience stores and gas stations in NC3, am I wrong?
The gas stations are automatically going to become non-conforming as a result of this ordinance change. The convenience, if they were to remove the tanks and just have convenience stores, if we were to remove that as a permitted use, then that component would also be non-conforming.
So they would, if they're already existing, they would still...
Under their current ownership, right? And even the sale of the property, if the use was kept consistent, the use would still be allowed as non-conforming. So if Bill Smith owns a gas station with a convenience store on York Street and he sells it to Tom Jones and Tom Jones resumes operation exactly the same either on day one or on day 364, that non-conforming use stays in place.
Okay.
If, if he lets it go to day 366, he's got a big problem on his hands.
So again, I'm still on the burger team right now, but I will still say, I would like to, for you to note, if we do go to the NC3, please remove the following. Private club, because that could be defined as an adult entertainment private club. Pawn shop, check cashing establishment. I would like you to, I, I still have major questions about general commercial service use, so thanks for bringing that up because you could slide something in there on general commercial, you know, they could say, "Oh, it's just tobacco, it's general." Event venue. Where's the parking? Why, that should go away for this particular parcel. A convenience store, I agree with Mr. Moon, and bedding should go away.
So we, we do have, you know, a parcel currently in the, in what will become NC3 on York Street that does have a private club. It's either the Moose's or the Elks or the, I don't know, Elks or Yaks or something. I don't know, private clubs. Not to be disparaging of what their name is, I just don't know it. And it is currently in use as an events venue, right? The Republican Committee does meet there and they do have events there where people, elected officials and famous people visit and they invite in, you know...
Sure, but don't they, don't they fall under something else that's already...
I think they're using it as general office, but it's also being used sort of as an event space.
Okay, I understand that, but I figured that they fall under already, would fall under something else that's already listed in there and what they do with, that would be listed as that and what they do within that is their own business.
If I may, the adult establishment aspect of a private club drinking, that, that's provided with, we have a definition for adult establishments. We also, adult-oriented uses. They're only permitted with special exception in the industrial district. That's as restrictive as we can be.
Right. We have to allow, we have to allow that use.
But private club, that's generally going to be more based upon alcoholic beverage sales, which...
Which is already listed in several other ways with brew pub, micro winery, small restaurant without a drive-through, you know, it's already in there.
And in speaking with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, there are no additional licenses available with the exception of a, oh shoot, it's the, the availability, we would have to have a determination from Main Street and them providing an application that there is some kind of economic development benefit to having the bar or drinking establishment.
Okay, understood.
If I may make one more point, thank you. To Chad's point about residential uses and conversion, it is clear under NC3 that all but staff and student housing and manufactured homes are permitted by right. So someone who owns the building or owns part of the properties could convert it to a dwelling that is multifamily, a multifamily conversion, single detached dwelling, so you still have residential uses in the neighborhood district. Okay, in the NC3, okay.
All right.
And I think I said it, but tobacco and vape store, not for it, thank you.
Right, right. It's not on the list currently, so. All right, so R1 or NC3 with small bedding, convenience and grocery removed, Mr. Bales?
Uh, NC3.
And Patty was the same. Chris, you still?
Still R1.
I get you. Alicia?
NC3.
And then I would agree. So I have four for NC3 with those three uses removed.
I'm still R1.
Yeah, I think that's as close as we're going to get to a consensus here. Honestly, I think it is a compromise. I think it protects the business owner, or I'm sorry, the parcel owner, potential owner as it is for sale as well as the borough here, that we're not limiting the use of this soon-to-be gloriously historic property.
Thank you, glorious, I love, that's better.
Thank you all for a respectful and thorough discussion on that. I really appreciate everybody's professionalism and ability to work through emotional topics, which is a great, great segue to our final issue of the evening.
Bring it on.
So the last thing for us here is going to be the discussion of the revitalization district. I think Mr. Whitmore spelled out for us pretty, pretty eloquently here. We have five essential options here. Option one is to do what the working group, I'm sorry, no, the Planning Commission proposed, which is to expand the ROR revitalization district, not ROR, to expand the revitalization district across Carlisle to take up some of these underutilized properties in the downtown core. However, the Planning Commission also recommended limiting the height to 48 feet. We discussed this at length last week. There was not, I don't believe, anybody who, with the exception maybe of Mr. Bales, who strongly felt that limiting the height of the existing revitalization district, which was the four parcels that composed the Gettysburg Station Development Site, was warranted. This is a 10-year-old discussion, council acted, the decisions were made, the parcel was purchased in good faith and development has been planned and begun. If we were to change the rules governing that particular section, now we would be significantly damaging the current owner who bought it. If he was to resell it with new rules in place, he would not be selling the same parcel he purchased. So I did not hear last week, please correct me if I'm wrong, a dominant sentiment for changing zoning rules on what we are calling the Gettysburg Station site. So the question then becomes, if we expand the revitalization district across the street into some underutilized prime real estate, and then this is, I think, a point you made very eloquently tonight, Mr. Whitmore, this is prime real estate. And if you look at it, you would not know that. So, not really clear what option two is showing us. Can you look at slide number 12, please? John?
This one? So this is just the current ROR?
Oh, not that one, the next one.
This would be utilizing the revitalization district as the ROR district. So it encapsulates Gettysburg Station and the SCAP property.
So this option is basically leaving it kind of as it is now.
Yep.
Right? So the existing revitalization district, which includes the SCAP property, would have the same rules that are already in place and everything across Carlisle Street would keep the Old Town designations. The next slide, option three. What does option three do?
This is just the Gettysburg Station property as revitalization.
Oh, it takes SCAP, oh, is that what you just said? It removes SCAP from, from that. All right. Option four, removes the Gettysburg Station site from redevelopment altogether?
Yep.
And returns it to Old Town?
It's an option.
It's a terrible option, yeah. So then option five is something that we started talking about last week, which is everything on the east side of Carlisle Street, less the SCAP property, would keep the current rules. And then the new revitalization district across Carlisle Street, which encompasses the properties we've been talking about, would have their own unique set of rules for how height could be achieved. So it'd be a, you know, a new set of incentives. So I think essentially we're coming down, I would posit that we have three choices in front of us. Leave it as is, expand the revitalization district and extend the existing rules and incentives across the street, or create two revitalization districts, one with the existing rules that govern the station site and then the second would be with new rules. Now those new rules could be 72 feet, it could be 60 feet, it could have a completely different incentive, incentives. Some of the incentives that I think John spelled out are pretty amazing, right? Like if you want to get to 60 or 72 feet, you've got to build us a million dollars worth of sidewalk. I don't know if any of y'all ever check out the Facebook comments on the borough site, but one of the most common ones you see is, "Fix the damn sidewalks." We would love to, we would love to. Every single square costs us $5,000 to $7,000. We would love to fix it all, but we cannot. So that incentive alone, you know, if you want to get to seven stories, you're going to, you know, we could set three rules. So the base, the base height is 48 feet. You can get 12 feet if you donate a million dollars to sidewalk repair or if you donate X number of dollars to Stevens Run wall restoration or if you paid for a splash pad at the, at the rec park. There's any number of ways we could incentivize somebody who believes that these properties have value and it could be redeveloped into something profitable for themselves as the owner while generating tax revenue for the borough. We could also do what we have done with the Gettysburg Station site, and I don't think that's something that's talked about quite enough. The incentives that this particular developer took advantage of in order to accomplish the height in question are benefits to the borough that we could never possibly have achieved on our own. The things that, you know, we are looking to benefit from, quiet railroad crossings, potentially an elevator on the parking garage, potentially permanent renting of underutilized rooftop parking in the parking garage, crosswalks, interloop, investment, green spaces, any number of things. The developer has been, I honestly, my assessment over the time I've spent on council watching this process is that this is, this is the model we should be pursuing. We should be pursuing relationships with developers that not only redevelop these parcels and create tax revenue, which we, the county and the school department sorely, school, district sorely need, but that also meet other goals we have that we are incapable of meeting ourselves as we have extraordinarily limited revenue streams. I do want to make a case, could you put up slide number four, please, that shows the There you go. So this is a really important map. This is the comprehensive plans, highlighted areas for designated growth as they were set nine years ago. We have an estimated 10,000 new homes coming online in the next five to 10 years in those designated areas. And in the red area there at the top of the map, that's, that's Amblebrook. The areas to the northeast of the borough, due north of the borough and to the northwest of the borough are experiencing record development right now. That is new homes that are being built and every one of those homes is creating tax revenue for Cumberland Township or Strabane Township. Yet every single one of those new 10,000-plus residents is going to be driving through our town every single day. And we will be paying to pave those roads when we're allowed to, except on state roads, provide first response services, get yelled at about our parking fees. We are the urban core of Adams County, yet of all of that gray area and some of that red area, you know, there is a glaring exception in terms of places where this comprehensive plan and growth and development have not been accomplished, and that is the borough of Gettysburg. In nine years, we have had no growth. Between the 2010 and 2020 census, we saw our population drop and we have seen, we have reports from organizations like At Home Adams County who will tell us that in the borough of Gettysburg, where a significant, more than 40% of our population is below the poverty line, we do not have the housing that is needed here. What the Gettysburg Station site has offered is, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket of the kind of development we need to be encouraging. I say all that to say this. The presentations we had at the beginning of this meeting talk about the vision that has been set for Gettysburg by previous councils, by the county, by the Economic Development Alliances, by the state. Adams County has a housing shortage. Adams County is ripe for growth. We are in such great proximity to the border of Maryland and growing bustling metropolises like Baltimore and Washington. We have a housing shortage. We can become more than just a tourist destination, and in fact, we have to. Over the course of the last year, listening to much of the public comment at the Planning Commission meetings, on more than one occasion, I heard it suggested that we don't need any housing in Gettysburg because there's housing being built past Giant. And so the people who work in our restaurants can just walk here from Giant. I heard, I heard a local resident say that one day last August, it was 96 degrees that day. It was 96 degrees that day. You know, people who work for minimum wage at our restaurants can just walk over a mile here down a highway with no sidewalks. That's, that's the solution. In the meantime, we should just let all the tax revenue go to the exterior townships who are putting consistently more pressure on us. These 10,000 homes that are being built over the next five to 10 years are estimated to put such pressures on the engineering of our streets here in Gettysburg that PennDOT is predicting the failure of our traffic circle by 2032 to be able to actually move the traffic in this neighborhood, in this area. That's the sort of development that's going on around us that we are not taking advantage of and participating in. So we have an opportunity to plant a tree so that in 10 years, in 15 years, when a developer comes to us and says, "I have a parcel in mind, I have a project in mind, it's going to create X number of homes. It's going to create new storefronts. It's going to create tax revenue." We need to be in a position where we can say, "Great, we're ready to work with you." That's my position on this. So of the three options, I think that are most viable, leave it as it is, expand it across Carlisle Street with the rules that are already in place, or expand it across Carlisle with a separate zone that has its own development priorities and rules. I think those are the three things we want to focus on tonight. If anybody disagrees and they'd like to pursue one of the other two as a topic of discussion, we're here for it. But I think that's where we gotta, we have to concentrate here. I will say that option one. For, uh, we're gonna skip that option one. So our option one is going to be what in the slideshow is option two, which is leaving it as is. So I'll say, option one is as is. Option two for us is going to be sort, it's not really represented here, but it's basically the expansion of the existing rules for redevelopment. And option three would be creating two zones, and then we would kind of need to, and if that's where it lands, we need to hammer out what those height limits would be and what the incentives for height would be. So I think this will probably, like the last one, take a two or three rounds of votes and discussions, so I'd just like to kind of figure out where everybody is. Thank you for listening to me, as I've tried to do my best to set up the context here. So I will let you know that having spoken with Patty, she is in favor of expanding the revitalization district with the current rules of 72 feet and adding new incentives.
I'll tell you, as far as where I'm at right now, I would leave the east side as is and create a separate on the west side of Carlisle, which is, I guess, our option.
Three?
I'd probably prefer sticking at 48, but in the spirit of compromise, I'd also be one to, I'd be amenable at 60.
Chris?
I would concur with Mr. Vales. And I don't like the expansion into the SCAP property, but keep it as is in the, in the station site. But I would be willing to, yeah, I wouldn't, that option, no. The next one, John? So option three, and I would be willing to discuss expanding the height, but not to 72 on the west side. I would be willing to look at 60.
Okay. Alicia?
Option two.
Chad?
Can you, okay, so the option two is the planning commission proposed?
No.
Option two is expansion for both sides of Carlisle.
Option two is expanding the revitalization district with the rules as they currently exist for the station site. And option three would be creating a second revitalization zone on the west side with perhaps new height limitations or some other set of rules.
I am in favor of expansion. As has, has been mentioned before many times, and I'll say it again, we can only go up. We need to go up. We need more tax revenue, and I'm, I'm for the expansion, but I want it incentivized. I want as much incentives as possible so that we can get those big developers that want to come and do something with these, with these parcels. And I think where it was at 72 was fine.
I would attend to agree as well. That would put it four in favor of expanding the existing revitalization zone with the rules that are intact. I don't know, I mean, I don't, have we ever heard from the folks who own the SCAP parcel what it is they would like to see done with that?
I'd have to check with Troy again. My understanding was that it was initially broached and that, I guess, it didn't necessarily seem like a good candidate, and that's why they, that's why it was okay with having it as NC1 for that property.
Was it in the revitalization district? Is it currently in the revitalization district?
Yes.
And so when that decision was made nine, 10 years ago, were the SCAP people involved in that conversation?
They, they were consulted, for sure, the level of which they were involved in the conversations, I cannot recall. However, I do recall specific conversations that they were included partially because of the parcel size, which would allow for the larger development.
Yeah. Can you bring up the table, please? Oh, you already have it up. All right. So these are some of the proposed incentives for height up to 72 feet. So I think I understand the current rules, like the base zoning gives you 48 feet, but then if you do, fill in the blank, you can do X number more feet.
Yeah, the ROR, there's like a few that you get 24 feet, and then there's a few others that you get 12 feet.
All right. So integrated parking is a good one, right? Like, it was, as was brought up, and I think rightly, there isn't a lot of street access if, you know, for most of those parcels along railroad street. And then a lot of the others are fronting on alleys, which could be, you know, reengineered to be more than the one-lane alleys they are now, where that need to exist. But one of the great things that the station site has worked into its plan is the subterranean parking. That takes a lot of vehicles off the road, off of street-level parking. I, I think that's a pretty good incentive. Anybody disagree?
I think any parking is going to be a great incentive, any.
But not a parking lot.
I think any parking in the borough is going to be a great incentive.
Right. Transit center relocation, we would cross off, is that will already be accomplished. Green area development is good to keep. GIL, I think we would probably cross off because by the time any development was proposed, that section of the GIL will be substantially complete. Low to moderate income housing inclusion. This is one where we really have an opportunity to state our values here, right? We are a direct entitlement community. We have greater than 40% of the population that's dependent on the availability of low-income housing, and it is hard to come by. This, I think, is a really excellent incentive for height. And I think we could set a percentage of the housing units. John, is there a standard for how that could, is handled?
Not a very great standard. We do have, I'm gonna pull up the language we sent out for these provisions. Let's see. So the inclusionary housing, in order to qualify for the increase or extended building height incentive for this site improvement, an applicant shall construct a minimum of one affordable rental housing units for every 10 market rate units produced. Applicants shall coordinate its inclusionary housing proposal with the Adams County Housing Authority before presenting its proposal to the zoning officer. And speaking with the housing authority, they just want housing. So that's why they didn't want the impact fee or anything like that. The challenges that I've seen in inclusionary zoning for, especially like Montgomery County, Maryland's moderately priced dwelling unit program, the issue you run into with the fee is a developer will always pay a fee as opposed to developing the housing. So you're not going to get housing. When, if you go too high of a percentage, though, it may not make the numbers pencil. So that's why we're recommending a 10%. I would say you could probably get away with 25%, but anything more than, it's going to be challenging for that incentive probably to work without having a low-income housing tax credit or some other kind of capital stack making this specifically a low-income housing product.
I've, I've also heard on this, and this could be wrong, is that if they, you know, they'll say, "Okay, we'll do 10%." Once they've got it built, it's not enforceable. So they can, they can change the rate as they need to. I could be wrong on that. That's, I've heard that, though.
Any truth to that?
It would be something where we would probably have to put in covenants with the property. We would have to allow, most likely, the Adams County Housing Authority, the authority to enforce those covenants. That's why we'd have to work with them, because they're going to be the agency that's really going to be making sure it's happening. We're not in a position to monitor housing programs in that regard.
Right. Lead, lead building design. That's, I mean, that's, that's a goal. I think we could definitely put pen to paper on. So that, I mean, this is, these are rules that, you know, talk about putting your building in place in an ecologically sound manner. I mean, we have a lot of lead and asbestos in this town, right? Solar, I think, is a great incentive, but I don't think it's worth 12 feet. Channel wall restoration definitely could be. Public market space would be really cool. And, I mean, there was a couple of companies that tried indoor public market spaces here in town and weren't able to accomplish that. So anyone have thoughts on this list?
I think channel, because we talk about it at every meeting, channel wall, sidewalks, parking should be top incentives. How much can you give us, and how much feet will that give, will you give them?
What would you think about 10% low-income housing?
All right, now, I guess, good question.
Or income contingent.
I was gonna say, are you, when you, when you say low-income housing, are you saying affordable housing, or are you saying government-assisted housing? But you said housing authority, which means government-assisted housing. I mean, I am in favor of both, but because I know the realities of this borough and the people that, that live here and work here. A lot of government-assisted housing, they are indeed working here.
Right.
And they need places to live.
That's right.
So that they can work here in the service industries that serve this tourism town.
That's right.
Sorry, I got emotional. I'm an actor. But yeah, I am in favor of it. If they're gonna incentivize, you want, you know, let's, let's see what we can do on that. But absolutely affordable housing, and I mean people that are working in the service industry, that is the tourism, you know, heart. Our restaurants, our bars, our shops, they, we want that, I want them to live here and walk to work.
Yeah, 100%. So.
Would it be beneficial if we, unless we have to choose this now, like, we've made a list of our seven, and then we all sent them over to see where they ranked up, or do you want?
So, I mean, do we need to, do we need to list these in the ordinance at this point, the incentives, or is that something that can be workshopped later?
The staff is recommending for the transfer development rights and the impact fees to not do those right now. We don't have, we would require additional ordinance to make those work. And so like the sidewalk one, as it is now, we can only require the developer to improve the sidewalks in front of their property.
Right.
We don't, we, we have to go through some hoops with the municipality's planning code to be able to enable that sidewalk fee. But, I mean, there's clearly a benefit. So if we, if there's consensus from the board, what we would, what I'd recommend tonight, we have the, so we'd have integrated parking, green area, inclusionary housing, and then the LED sustainable building and site design, and channel wall restoration. Those are what we could probably do immediately, and we could still investigate with the planning commission the additional incentives and go through the process of establishing those TDR and impact fee programs.
Do you have what you need here? Have we left any topics on?
Well.
Painfully flayed.
Which, just to confirm, I'd, I guess I need direction on which option.
I believe we had four in favor of expanding the ROR across with the 72 feet intact.
That, that is sufficient. I will be able to have this all ready to go for Monday.
So, if I may clarify a point.
Please.
So currently under ROR, different incentives are weighted differently. So the, you know, one, I believe it was the relocation of the transit center was worth 24 feet, where the GIL, for example, was only worth 12 feet. So, and, and to my, my presentation at the beginning, this is a deliberate policy decision. So if, if the council weighs one thing heavier over another, like low to moderate income housing, to Mr. Carr's point, do you make that 24 feet? So I think that's a point that staff would like to understand, on, on these incentives, does council weight them differently?
Well, so, I mean, I think on the, the list, sidewalks would actually be the lowest priority, because once they take prop, once they take ownership of the property, they're already responsible for repairing those sidewalks. So I don't think that that's a great incentive for height, because they'll have to do it So, and I don't know that we would, so when we say channel wall, are we talking about only if the parcel abuts the channel wall?
Yeah, so that one as designed, it's the, came up with a scenario where you use the, let me just pull it up, it is a little funny. Okay, the applicant is responsible for the reconstruction of Stevens Run channel wall on the basis of one linear foot of wall improvement for every one linear foot of parcel fringe or total length of Stevens Run channel wall abutment, whichever is greater.
So I'd say that that's, you know, that's a 12-foot option, but I would suggest that subterranean parking would be the 24-foot option. Anyone have a feeling there?
I would agree.
I just want to be on the record that I'm for only 60 feet on the west side of Carlisle.
Yeah, I agree. But it, I mean, even if we don't have it with Butterfield, so it's, I think we, you have the majority here. This doesn't include, like, tax abatements, right?
No, we don't have a, any type of special taxing district, TIF district, or.
We actually have alerta in ROR right now.
Well, that, that's, that's not something that was envisioned with the zoning.
Right. That, that could be added in the future. It's a whole other conversation. That's not really related to zoning.
Right. Right.
And just to clarify, Mr. Moon, whenever we were talking about seventy-two feet and incentives, are you talking about seventy-two feet and incentives if you want more than seventy-two feet?
No, seventy-two plus...
Incentives to get to.
Seventy-two plus mechanical is the cap still.
Is the cap. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Anything else?
I think I have enough to go on. We'll be able to proceed.
Right. This has been a long and arduous and passionate public discourse. I know there are people here who are probably not happy right now, and I hope you know that full respect, full affection. We're doing our best, and we're trying to come up with the best plan moving forward. I think that concludes our business for this evening, so we will go back to our second public comment section of the evening. This is not restricted to items appearing on the agenda.
Sharon Monahan. So I certainly share everyone's frustration with how long the process has taken. But this is the first time the council has really had the weight of these decisions on all of you. So even though the Planning Commission took a long time, and all of us have been going to meetings, it's really important that you understand the decisions that you're making and the potential consequences. So I just want to go back one more time quickly on this definition of family so everyone understands exactly what this proposed definition will do to the community. There are three categories of people that we're dealing with here. And I think the Planning Commission's proposed definition of college students almost gets us there. If you add two words, financially independent household, we can rest with that. It will really help us go a long way with the college student problem. Then there are two more categories of people: families and unrelated people. As Chad pointed out earlier, the current definition of family is not bad. It is one or more persons related by genetics, adoption, marriage, which can be single sex. So just taking that, and there could be other tweaks to it, but just taking that definition of family includes grandparents, cousins, and you can add, you know, pair. I mean, there are some tweaks that we can do to family, but it's not a restrictive definition of family. And no one is trying to limit how people self-identify as a family. All of us want to say, "This is my chosen family. This is my related family." But for the purposes of organizing society, we have to have some kind of limits. Because if you take the third category, which is the most problematic one, and you leave it without any numerical limit, you are just taking the college student problem and moving it up to a later stage in life. Because anyone can own any piece of property, any home in Gettysburg, and put any number... Of course, there would be some problems with, you know, how many people are in a room and square footage and all of that, perhaps. But if you have a five-bedroom home, you can have someone in New York buy the house and rent it out to ten unrelated people between the ages of twenty-five and thirty. Do you think you'll have some problems then? And they can just say, "We're a family." I have been unable to find a single community in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that does not have a number limit on the amount of unrelated people who can live together and call themselves a family in a house. Lewisburg, no more than three unrelated people. Philadelphia, which was in the packet tonight, no more than three unrelated people. Cumberland Township, five. Strabane, three. Camp Hill, four. And we could go on and on. I don't know of any community that does not have a limit on unrelated people. And that's what I would like to leave you with tonight. There are many different ways of writing it. There are a whole bunch of suggestions in here. But how you define... How you make this distinction is going to change the complexion of this community forever because once you do it, you can't go back. They'll be grandfathered. So just like all the pseudo-fraternities that are popping up around the college, these houses can pop up anywhere in the borough: in Colt Park, Springs Avenue, anywhere. And once we have them, I don't think you can go back. So please, take your time with this decision. Look at all of these options and call upon any of us to participate in the drafting of something that makes sense, that makes everyone feel included and appreciated in this community, which is one of the really beautiful things about Gettysburg. It's the inclusion and the diversity. But not destroy the nature of the community that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, all. Whoa. Cool. Alana Anderson, here on behalf of At Home in Adams County, as well as myself. Thank you so much for what you said today. This really affirms the work that we do. It greatly encourages me that you are having such robust, transparent, and dignified conversations about inclusive housing. This is exactly the direction that we're going. We would love, if you ever want to have us here and have a presentation, because I love what Mr. Carr said about, are we talking about low income or are we talking about moderate income? Because we do want to focus on both, but we absolutely want to focus on the missing middle, the attainable housing. And I continue to say this in every public meeting I'm in. I am personally affected. I make fifty thousand dollars, which, when I graduated from college in 2010, I thought I'd be rich on that. I worked in tech for twice that amount for ten years. I chose to leave tech and come home. I chose to be here for my parents when they age. I chose to be in the place that I love the most. And I cannot afford an apartment by myself. Going to keep it together. So this is an issue that affects me. There are people that don't think it affects people that look like me, and there are people who are in worse situations than me because they do not earn what I earn, and they're considered lower income, and I'm on that cusp. So it is a nuanced conversation, as you all know, and I'm just here for us having that conversation going forward. Thank you for that. I would love to have any further insight about the incentives. I'm all for it. Go for it. Last thing is, we are having our coalition meeting on September fifteenth from 1:00 to 2:30. I would love y'all to be there because this is the direction we're going. If you can't be there, I will figure out a way to get you that recording. But these are the conversations that we are advocating for, and thank you so much. I appreciate y'all, and I hope you get to bed sometime soon.
Thank you.
I also hope you get to bed soon, and me too. Okay. I'm not good at living, so I'm just going to say what I've been trying to put together. To save all... Do I have to say my name? Public comment, Monaco Grace Springs Avenue, respected members of Borough Council and members of the public, and anyone who's watching. To save all your email inboxes this week, I just want to recap the summary I heard about NC three with restrictions because I'm not totally clear on what was in that list. And I don't know if that list is the list or if that list is still going to be finessed. I heard, except where these businesses are already permitted by pre-existing use, NC three would not have convenience stores, bedding. I wasn't sure about grocery store. First, just for the record, I don't have a problem with small groceries. I would love a nice little fresh bodega. That'd be great. But that's aside. See, that's why I don't outlive. I wasn't sure what I heard about pawn shopping, but I did hear for the first time in my life today from Mr. Whitmore, and thank you again for your very helpful presentation at the beginning, that pawn shops are basically de facto gun shops now. I was thinking... I didn't put it on any of my lists because I thought people are selling household items. Maybe you've got hard times and you need to resell some stuff. It never occurred to me that guns were in pawn shops, and that just reveals how little I know about that. That is what I was looking up. I was not angry or, like, texting people mad things. I was looking up gun regulations while some of that was going on. I was also receiving messages from neighbors who are live streaming, who are watching the livestream to thank you, as I told them I planned to stake the podium, to do, because we really appreciate your comments and your extreme thoughtfulness. And now I'm going to come back to what I had prepared. I am a little confused about gun regulation. Mr. Whitmore said that at one point you would be allowed to take those out of the list of special... The list of the catch-all. But you can't restrict them in the borough, but they... So I don't know what to say about that. I understand that's difficult. I do see that pawn shop was listed by special exception in the draft. And if pawn shops are actually gun shops, but they don't have that name, just like convenience stores are de facto vape shops, I hope that you... I hope I heard... I don't know if I was wishfully hearing, but I hope you were putting pawn shops in the list of things that would not go into NC three. And I don't know if you have the ability to comment on that after I'm done. Okay. Pawn shops are allowed by right elsewhere in the district, in Old Town and General Commercial, according to what you saw and according to the binder that I've been working through and flipping through frantically. So it seems like you can restrict them a little bit, and I guess I'm just hoping that you will. I also wanted to comment on the family thing, which I don't have a binder on, and I really didn't know about it much until these public comments. I saw when you put it up on the thing that it does say four people maximum, and so that's why I came to the podium before, because I know families that have concerns about that number. And so I just want to ask if maybe you could have something in the draft that allows for a petition through some formal process, that if there was some weird case where there was a family that didn't fit whatever definition you decide to use, they wouldn't be excluded by that number four, which seemed to be a sticking point for some folks. And that was also what caught my attention in addition to the actual draft. So, the last thing I just want to say, and what I really came here to say, was I so appreciate this discussion. You are clearly listening. I know these are tough issues. I'm so grateful for your time, as are my neighbors. I want to apologize if I seemed like I was disrespectful in some way, or if my emails have annoyed you. I really did not mean... I'm really trying to be helpful, so I'm sorry. And I wish I had conveyed greater trust in you earlier when I was a little emotional, and I regret that I did not. We elected you out of trust, and I think you made the best decisions you could, especially regarding 100 Beaufort Avenue. I think you made the best decisions you could with new information that's being presented to you on the fly and in a really genuinely challenging situation. And that affirms, tonight, what I've heard, affirms that trust. So I really, I really, really thank you. So this is a gratitude of comment and appreciation as the last thing I'll say. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sue, you have anything? All right. Again, I just wanted, before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to speak. I want to thank you, my colleagues, for always a respectful, passionate discussion. This has been a long time coming, and I really appreciate everybody's efforts tonight, especially our staff, who have put almost innumerable hours into this over the last four years. Thank you to everybody. We are adjourned.